Buenas. I'd like to thank our senators who are here this morning. Let's see if we have a quorum. Senator Tony Ada, Senator Gina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Ben Panglinen, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Reese Spishos, Vice Speaker Cruz, and Senator Spaldan. Yes, we do have nine altogether, so we will go into session. The legislature is called to order. We're back from recess from yesterday. The first bill on the agenda is Bill 391-30COR, and I'd like to call upon the author, Senator Panglinen.
Si dos más, si, Madam Speaker. Manana si dos para hamzo. Todos ni maniakungok. Then, todi mangayigunin, mangatongo pagunogan. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion, or I move that Bill 391-30COR is introduced and reported, an act to amend 61619 and 61633 of Article 6, Chapter 61, Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to hearing date notice, be placed in the third reading, and I'd like to briefly discuss the bill.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 391 is my attempt to continue to bring transparency, and where we have levels of transparency in the government processes now that really do not reach sometimes beyond who does not reach who the people we want to reach to, to let them know what's happening in their community and so forth. When what we're doing is not enough, we've got to do more. And Bill 391 will do more in terms of ensuring that the people that live in communities know what's happening with regards to properties in their community and the use of those properties. Very simply, Madam Speaker, the process outlined in 391 adds a simple element to the current process of rezoning or getting variances for the use of properties in any community on Guam. Right now, if somebody wants to increase the intensity use, the density of the property that they have, meaning going from and the activities and the uses of that property, they have to go to the Guam Land Use Commission at the Department of Land Management. And we do have a process there where we have to notify members and owners of property within a 500-foot radius. We have to publish it in the newspaper. We have to have public hearings at the mayor's offices. There's many opportunities. But you know what, Madam Speaker? No matter, even when we do all this, we really still get people who somehow do not know or don't become aware of exactly what's happening right next door to that empty lot that they have, that they live next to. And so, this became to us really apparent during the Dos Edmontes zoning plan that was submitted to this body, and then, of course, referred to my committee. When the Dos Edmontes zoning plan was going through, it was that property that was returned by the federal government, ancestral lands and to original landowners, and there was all unzoned property. So, in order to make a determination of how to use that property and what the allowed use should be, the Guam Land Use Commission, for a whole year, developed a zoning plan and then left that zoning plan open for a whole year to be modified at the request of the landowners. And they did have public hearings, and they did have meetings, and they did conduct these out in the community as well as at the Department of Land Management. And they finalized the plan and sent it down to the legislature. Our office and my committee with Haste Jurisdiction Over Land held another public hearing on the process. And believe it or not, we had people who came in and said they weren't informed, they didn't know about it, they didn't hear about it, they didn't read about it. And so, here was this zoning plan for determining the use of their property, and these landowners just weren't aware. Is it their fault? Probably. Is it the government's fault in terms of not adequate notice and outreach? Probably. Is it the administrator's fault who, in the cases, the administrator was notified and didn't notify his family? Yes, all of us bear some individual responsibility. So, you know, when we looked at that, we said, how can we make sure that people know what's happening to the properties that they live next to and they have an opportunity to voice their concern for what is being planned? And then, of course, campaign season started. And then I saw all these political signs coming up on the roads, whether I wanted to see them or not, whether I liked the candidates or not, whether I thought they should be running for some other position or not, whether I thought they shouldn't be running for that position or not. I saw all these campaign signs. I said, you know what? That works. It works because you see it every day, and you kind of look for it. So, we said, why don't we apply that simple concept to these rezoning requests? So that if you're going to rezone a property and increase it, you put up a sign on the property that's being rezoned so that everybody that drives by can look at that empty lot, see a sign, and go, I wonder what that is? And then they see, oh, they're going to put a six-story condominium here. Wait a minute. You know, I don't think that belongs here. I don't think we can support it. I don't think our water pressure can support it. I don't think the traffic can support it. So, it's just another requirement. And somebody's going to say, oh, there you go again, another requirement. Well, it's another communication tool for the people that have to live with the changes in the land use plan surrounding their environment to be able to get an opportunity to voice their opinion. So, very simply, what this bill does is that if you're going to rezone a piece of property, in addition to all of the others, one small addition. You put up a four-by-eight sign on the property that says, this property is being rezoned by this person, requested by this person, for this purpose, and you can contact this office to voice your opinion, whether you support it or not. And therefore, everybody that drives by that property, the person next door, people that really live around it when they drive by, they now can see this sign, in addition to reading about it in the newspaper, which sometimes you can't see the notice because of the notices like two inches by three inches with, you know, .01 point type. And you just, and it's this lot number. You say, I wonder where that lot number is. I always wonder every once in a while. I read those rezoning notices in the paper, always. And then I said, I wonder where that property is. Well, you're going to be able to tell if it's next to your house because there's going to be a sign next to your house in that empty lot that says, this property is being rezoned. So, it really, I think, is something that will increase the awareness of the people. One other issue, Madam Speaker, where I think that this will help is sometimes the landowner that owns the property may be off island when the notices are sent out and the mail is sent out, if it's just through the mail. Or it belongs to the owners living off island, and so he doesn't know. So, what happens is, the owner's brother, who's now driving by that piece of property, sees this rezoning and say, oh, they're going to rezone that property next to my brother's house. I wonder if he knows about it. I'll call him up and say, hey, you know, they're doing that. So, it really brings this, the community around the area together to be notified, in addition to all the other notification structure requirements in the law. So... I think, Madam Speaker, that this bill, as simple as it may seem, and I'm sure somebody's going to say another burden, really, rather than being a burden, I think enhances the transparency of this government, increases the communication that occurs between neighbors that want to change the use of their property and inform the other neighbors how it would affect their property values, their property uses, and their quality of life as you change the uses of property surrounding your own personal abode. So, Madam Speaker, I ask that my colleagues please consider this, support it. I understand, and Madam Speaker, I thought that what we wanted, what I wanted to do is, so, I wanted to, yeah. So, I want to, Madam Speaker, plead to my colleague and ask them for their consideration of increasing transparency, but most importantly also, increasing this policy of notification. And, you know, neighbors who know what the other person's doing, I think, makes for a better neighborhood. That's the theory behind, you know, the crime watch in the neighbor. You watch out for your neighbor. So, if you're a neighbor and you want to change the use of your property, making sure that your neighbor knows, I think, only makes for a better neighborhood. And so, I think that this will ensure that we have a more understanding community and a more cohesive community. So, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I plead for my colleague's support on this.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. Speaker Wampad, you recognize on Bill 391.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 391, and I truly understand exactly what, you know, the author was trying to do here. Because I have actually gone through the process myself wanting to rezone a piece of property. And I've always wondered, because one of the rules was that the radius of 500 feet around my property, that the community, the residents of the community would need to be informed of, you know, what's happening. And I saw the process as well when that was also happening to me, where our neighborhood was going to be affected. Fortunately, I was able to receive a notice and took notice of it, actually, to read it, you know, and able to respond to it. So, but there are times when you don't get the notice, where they put the notice in your door and the wind will blow it away, or the old excuse, the dog got it before you were able to read it. And then the families don't know, you know, what's going to happen to their neighborhood. The idea, I think, is great. It's not that costly. I thought at first whether maybe for individual, one person, one half-acre agricultural lot, or maybe even an acre for that matter, that maybe the cost could be reduced, taking that into consideration. But then I know we've done really large types of rezonings, especially now we're starting to see that where acres of agricultural lands now are being bought up only then to be rezoned to commercial or industrial. And I don't think that, in that particular case, then that, you know, this four-by-eight sign would really make a big dent in their pockets to be able to put up the information that they're wanting to rezone, you know, that property. So, I'd just like to say, you know, to thank, of course, the author for this. I've reconsidered, you know, my position after, when just listening to him speak, you know, helped me as well in considering it. So, I thank him for that, and I do support Bill 391.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other senator wishing to speak on Bill 391? If not on the motion to place, Senator Spaldan, recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I don't really have a problem with this bill, and I understand the logic behind it because I too have, or I should say, our family too has been affected by rezoning within a radius in which we never got notice. Or if we did get notice, again, like the previous speaker said, perhaps it got lost in the wind or got chewed up by the dog or, you know, much like the old proverbial, the check is in the mail and I don't know what happened to it. The only problem I have is that there is no stipulation within this amendment to this section of the law in terms of what it should say. The requirement right now is basically a four-foot by eight-feet, basically a plywood, standard plywood size. That does not basically instruct how big the lettering could be or should be. In other words, if we do pass this bill into law and somebody is going to rezone their lot, they put up a piece of plywood, but the lettering is two inches high, you know, the font size is small. It's very unreadable unless you go right up to it and stand right next to it. They would still fall in compliance with the law and yet would really not give any notice. So, Mr. Speaker, I was wondering if I could take a, perhaps it's a real brief recess to talk with the author of this bill to see if we could perhaps work in some language that would perhaps identify special wording, maybe something that says in a certain-sized font that notice to rezone, you know, whether it's 12 inches on each lettering for that particular thing, at least so that if we are going to give notice by this methodology, that if you're just driving by, it's very visible from the road. Otherwise, if we don't put something, a requirement like that in, you would fall within compliance of this law without even being able, without anybody actually being able to read what's on that billboard, and it may, again, may not attract any kind of attention. So, if I could just take a brief recess, Madam Speaker, and speak with the author, maybe there is some solution to this so that we can, if we are to go down this road, we should probably give proper notice.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess.
Thank you. Ben, what do you think?
I mean, you know, just, you know, I mean, something substantial because, you know, if they put all that lettering and all that information and, you know, font size that big, they're compliant. And, you know, if you were passing by, you don't know what they're going to do. And totally, notice to rezone, and all the other information, it doesn't matter. You know, they'll pull up, you see, I think, notice to rezone. And as this comes into play, you know, because I know my past new work, it's always the way I was. It was just on the committee report, and I know that I'm a complete report trying on the first line, or the only.
To be rezoned, and add all the information, but the rezone is large.
Yeah, it's gotta be, I mean, they're all there, maybe you get very interested, you pull over, and you know, everything.
Yeah, you're right, because you know why that's true? Because I look at signs, you know, construction, so I wanted to kind of look at.
Yeah, yeah, I give a what, but being commoners, you're right. Notice to be zoned, whatever.
Not all of it, you know, probably what's happening. You know, guy who will work any time to throw the information you want, and it's just a one, you can get the necessary requirements.
I'm not sure if you understand, and I'm trying to spare that.
Could we, could we, now, it's not, it isn't built, but they will write up, they start to know what the requirements are, and these are reports, and they design the public. Okay. Do back to the last meeting, so that then they'll set up the standards both sides, rather than us trying to figure it out by now. Have them, you know.
I bet that, you know, the way, we're not going to know the words, or the names, or anything, they, with our, yeah. Whatever, 24-hour spot, or whatever, you can turn up a spot. Notice the word, nor. You know what I'm saying? It's still. I have more. What do you, what do you? We got to see.
Hey, everybody, I want you to take notice, break, break green. I'm putting a Facebook, it's very green. I can see all men who are uniformed, guys. And everybody who loves being in a store, and their civilian life, who love being uniformed. Yeah. I tell, but. Because then everybody's going to be wearing a building, wearing a building coat. Everyone has to be a rule. Yeah.
My presence, I mean. Actually, they were saying, I just want to make it, just really, I mean.
How many, how many?
If you're talking, it's just, you're too late to, I think, to say this. And I can't even say my doubts.
I'm sorry.
You know, why do I agree? No.
I think.
Well, I had childhood. When I had childhood, like, there's, I don't know.
You know, this is, or you're buying, you're, you're buying, you're having it. Where, that's right.
Yeah.
So, they're completely all that.
Yeah, my guy, what do I need for this?
I mean, it's, 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 uh, your, your, your.
But that's, you know, it's there.
I'm working for. Uh, I have.
It's a box. Yes.
Hold on, it's my birthday.
Dr. K, you don't have, you don't have this thing shop on day.
My name's, uh.
What are you doing, just drinking?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I don't have.
Why, my brother's store?
My mother was, I bought a lot, and I don't want to worry.
Then why try and think of that? So I would like to make one amendment, Madam Speaker, that would go in two places. Uh, and I'll just tell you where the first place is at. It would be on line twelve of the first page after the words "with," uh, "with," W-I-D-T-H, comma, um, so no smaller than four feet by eight feet in height and width. And then to add the words, with the words "notice to rezone in no less than twelve-inch high red letters on a white background occupying two feet by eight feet of the sign." And then going, and then another comma, displayed to make the following information to the general public available. So basically, the top half of the sign will provide you this notice to rezone that will, uh, ensure that you can read it, uh, that it's big enough to attract attention. Uh, and I was trying to stay away from all the gubernatorial colors, so it's red and white. And then the bottom half of the sign will have, and by the way, I'm changing my colors to red and white. And then the bottom half of the sign would then have the information of the applicant and so forth. And we'll leave that to the Land Use Commission to approve the sign.
Okay, good. Can you just read it one more time? And I know we will get a copy of it to make sure that everybody understands it.
So it would be to add the words after the word "with" on line twelve, "with," W-I-T-H, the words "notice to rezone in no less than twelve-inch high red letters on a white background occupying two feet by eight feet of the sign." And that same amendment would then also go to, um, and be added, um, to line three, uh, page three after the word "with" there also.
Page three, line three, with the same amendment.
That's correct.
On the amendment, are there any discussion? No objections? So ordered. And can you please make sure that the clerks have a copy then of your amendment?
Yes, we'll make sure the clerks have a copy. And I have one more amendment on the bill, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
And I would to, uh, to add my esteemed speaker as the second, uh, first primary co-sponsor.
On that motion without objections, so ordered.
I'll read that right off the top, so I can...
Okay. So on, on the, uh, motion then to send three-nine-one to, uh, third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We are now in bill four-oh-five and the author, Senator Panglinen, you recognize. And I think there is, you're right, you have a substituted, yeah. Four-zero-five. Here, you want my amendment here? There's, um, three, three-page substituted version. There, uh, there's one, uh, staff's giving you a copy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As Speaker, I'd, uh, like to, um, move that bill four-oh-five dash thirty C O R substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health, Human Services, and Judiciary be placed in the third reading file.
And you'd like to discuss it?
Yes.
They may proceed.
Thank you. Uh, before I, um, move on the substance of the bill, I'd just like to, uh, make a motion to, to, uh, bring the, uh, bill into technical, uh, conformance with our rules. Our standing rules say that only the floor can add as co-sponsor and the bill has been, uh, added coming out of committee. So I do want to, uh, uh, make the amendment then on the floor that Frank B. Uggan Jr. be added as the, uh, co-sponsor.
On that, uh, amendment, are there objections? None, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill, um, um, four-oh-five is a very simple bill. Um, one of the, um, ways in which this government has tried to, uh, implement cost savings is to allow, um, and still not, uh, impact the Guam local economy as much as possible, is to allow, whenever possible, purchases directly from manufacturers rather than from wholesalers on, on Guam. And we wanna, of course, whenever we can, do business with wholesalers and, and locally approved distributors of national products, uh, go through the local channels here because we wanna keep that money on circulating in our economy as much as possible and support local businesses and local employment. But in some areas, that's really not possible at all. Um, and sometimes the, the, uh, government can, can save so much money in going, going directly, uh, and the local companies are not even able to support us, uh, in the purchases of these products. Uh, so what this bill does is it adds the ability of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, uh, whenever possible to, um, to allow them to purchase, uh, drugs, generic or otherwise, directly from a manufacturer to ensure and maximize economy. Uh, what, uh, what has occurred is that mental health, as you know, under the consent decree, uh, is challenged with resources. Uh, and, and even in some cases, the resources that are available locally are not able to support the resource requirements of the Department of Mental Health, uh, in terms of the bulk purchases, the ability to finance those purchases by our local distributors and wholesalers. Uh, and we need to go directly to either the manufacturer or in some cases GSA, the federal purchasing arm. And so this bill would allow mental health the same opportunity that is granted, uh, to our other, uh, bulk purchasers of, of drugs, the Department of Administration, which pays for the drugs, the Department of Public Health and Social Services through its, a, uh, program with the community health centers, is able to purchase directly, saving us, uh, you know, sometimes over fifty to sixty percent of the cost of the drugs from the retail side. And then the, uh, Guam Memorial Hospital and, and Department of Education also on occasion may have a need to purchase drugs directly from manufacturers. And so this bill would just extend that, um, authority to the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, Madam Speaker, uh, and help them deal with their short resources there, uh, and give them the opportunity to maximize th- those resources with granting them the authority to purchase drugs directly from manufacturers. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank, uh, the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development and Health, uh, for his, um, graciousness in conducting this hearings and for his graciousness in, in reporting, uh, this bill and this version out. Uh, as you know, we both, uh, introduced the same bill because, uh, we're both concerned about it. We brought, we both, uh, became aware of the problem, uh, and even though he had control over the, uh, bills that are referred to his committee, uh, he so graciously decided to report, uh, my bill out and I thank him for that. Sidus Masin.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, recognize, um, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And thank you very much, uh, Speaker Panglinen. Uh, Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in, in full support of this legislation and I think the good author of this proposal, uh, he hit the nail on the head, so to speak, when he mentioned that there are two duplicates or almost completely duplicate legislative measures that were introduced around the same timeframe. And in this case, uh, he also explained extremely well the purpose behind and the authorization behind bill number four-oh-five and what it would provide the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. And anytime that we give our respective agencies an option to bulk purchase or to purchase drugs or pharmaceutical items or medicinal items directly from the manufacturer, it could result with anywhere from forty to sixty percent cost reduction. I don't wanna necessarily say savings because obviously any cost reductions, those resources can be applied towards purchasing additional medicinal items or, or drugs or pharmaceutical items. So in this particular case, it would incorporate the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. It's a wonderful option to provide and authority to provide this agency, knowing full well that there continues to be limited resources within the government of Guam, understanding that this is one of the line agencies that also generously takes from or requires resources from the general fund and not from a special fund. Just also, Madam Speaker, for the information of the body, the Department of Public Health and Social Services had also unveiled itself of a wonderful program within the last year, which is very similar and in line with this. And they have already realized the cost reduction in regards to how much they actually spend today versus what they had spent a year ago without using, utilizing that particular program and without applying the direct purchase option from the manufacturers of drugs and medicinal items. So I stand in full support of this particular legislative ma- measure, Madam Speaker, and I, I commend the sponsor of this legislation for, uh, requesting and insisting that in fact, we move forward with it in the, in an expeditious manner because it can be very supportive, very helpful, especially in light of the closure, closure of the fiscal year. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. On the, uh, motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on it? Senator Panglinen, would you like to close or you wanna move it down?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Um, I want to thank, uh, the retiring speaker, um, and certainly, uh, thank him for his support and his expeditious reporting out of this bill and would, uh, ask my colleagues for their support. Sidus Masin.
On the motion then to place, uh, bill four-oh-five and substitute it by the committee to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We have bill number, substitute bill number four-zero-six and I recognize the author's, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, um, move that, um, bill number four-oh-six dash thirty is substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services and Judiciary be, uh, placed in the third reading file, uh, and I would like to discuss it.
You may, uh, continue.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, uh, bill four-oh-six is really a, a, um, a real simple bill. Um, first of all, in, um, two thousand and eight, uh, and we, we had on Guam for the longest time, a greyhound racetrack. Uh, it was really, and it generated revenues. Uh, but then the, in two thousand and eight, the owner of the racetrack, uh, shut the, um, the racetrack down. Uh, but that shutdown, of course, was not unique to Guam. Uh, there was approximately throughout the country, um, throughout the country, there have been a decline of approximately forty-two percent of racetracks. And this is information, uh, according to the Association of Racing Commissioners International, uh, that throughout the country, uh, the, the gambling on greyhounds has declined by forty-two percent during the period two thousand and two to through two thousand and seven. And since two thousand and one, twenty-five American tracks have shut down operations, cutting the industry in half. Um, with the passage of this bill, we would of course join the ranks of many throughout the country who have shut down, uh, the racetracks. Um, the industry has also found that, um, the, it seems to be pretty characteristic that the standard practice of the greyhound racing industry pretty much condones really the cruel treatment of canines, uh, basically requiring, um, condoning, um, basically canines are kept, the greyhounds are kept in warehouse-style cages that's barely large enough to stand up, for the dogs to stand up or turn around in for twenty-four hours a day. In addition to confinement, greyhounds are often seriously injured and thousands more are killed when they are no longer able to compete as a result of injury or age. Uh, when the greyhound racetrack on Guam was shut down in two thousand and eight, um, what was, what happened was that a lot of the dogs were just either let go, uh, there were some people that, uh, adopted some of the animals, but basically what the local, um, a lot of the local, um, um, I guess people who, 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 who owned dogs, um, they went out and they rescued a number of these dogs, uh, dogs that were either abandoned or certainly were maltreated, over two hundred of them. And this effort to rescue the dogs and, and nurse them back to health, uh, required a significant amount of resources, uh, by both community members and advocacy groups and spending about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of resources, uh, to, uh, perform this effort. A lot of these dogs were also shipped off island to, uh, people who were willing to adopt the dogs. Now, um, the bill, uh, certainly hopes that, uh, by prohibiting greyhound racing, uh, we will not have a repeat of this particular incident where, uh, dogs are mistreated. Um, and, and so in order to do that, we actually have to repeal a certain section of the law that then, uh, would basically prohibit, uh, dog racing in the future. And so in section two of the bill, uh, by repealing section sixty-four point five of Article Two, Chapter sixty-four, Title Nine, Guam Code Annotated, we basically shut that window so that in the future, uh, anybody who comes back, uh, and applies for a license to start up a dog racetrack, uh, will be prohibited from doing so. And then we have also put in additional language which, um, which actually prohibits any betting or wagering on the speed or ability of dogs, uh, and it prohibits the Department of Revenue and Tax and any other government agencies from accepting or approving any applications or requests for any canine racing-related activities. Uh, so that, Madam Speaker, is really the, um, the gist of bill four-oh-six. Um, it, it basically just takes that one last step, that after the greyhound racing shut down and they all left the island, uh, we gotta go back and shut that door. Uh, and we can do that by basically repealing the authority to be able to open up a, uh, dog racing, uh, facility. I would ask my colleagues to, uh, please, uh, support the bill, um, and I, I certainly, I think we would go a long ways in ensuring, uh, better treatment of or preventing the maltreatment of animals at least through this activity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. On the motion, recognize Senator Frank Uggan Jr.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, the last few days, this, this legislative body, uh, was working on several proposals to save lives and we just concluded on another measure to save resources for government of Guam and now we're gonna save some dogs. So it's been a very good week, very productive week in terms of trying to save something. But Madam Speaker, as the, uh, committee that had the, the privilege to be able to hear and to receive comments on behalf of the members of the, of the body, I stand in full support of bill four-oh-six. And there was a particular, uh, species, and I'll call this dog, this greyhound dog, Ebony, which is the name that was, uh, reported to us. Apparently, one of the owners brought the dog into the public hearing room and showed us basically what the dog looks like extremely healthy and being well cared for. And then also there were a couple of photos that were circulated about the mistreatment of these dogs when in fact they were released out to the public not too long ago. And we all can recall and reflect on those experiences in terms of, uh, the mistreatment and the lack of, of feeding and whatever or however we wanna refer to it. But I have to look at some of our prior members of this body who authorized this particular activity. And along with it, that authorization was a funding source called the Marit- Paramutual Tax that was generated as a result of this activity that went to educational purposes. A good portion of that was directed towards the Guam Community College for some of the trades and technical training that that institution had provided prior to the closure of the Guam Greyhound Activities. And also it went to some other, uh, areas within the government of Guam that needed those resources. But you know, Madam Speaker, when you look at, at how this legislation came about and you look, you listen intently to the sponsor of the legislation about highlighting the, the rationale and, and the trend nationwide in terms of being able to move away from dog racing because there's a, there's a strong correlation to some extent of mistreatment of these animals. I think it only bodes well to continue to work in the direction of saving man's best friend and that's the, the dog, or, or a person's best friend, let me rephrase that because there's, there are a lot of women out there that also own dogs. So I stand in full support, Madam Speaker, of this legislation and certainly, uh, will vote in support of it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. On the motion, recognize the Vice Speaker and then Senator Cuthbert.
Just very quickly, Madam, uh, Speaker, I just thought I'd bring it to the attention of, um, our colleagues about the black eye that this community took because of the mistreatment of these animals and, um, the greyhound. While I was in California, one of the ra- one of the news stations did a anniversary, uh, news story one year after, and it was featured on Los Angeles TV and I, I believe throughout, uh, the country about the fact that two hundred dogs from Guam had to be airlifted and they showed pictures of the dogs and, um, the scathing comments that were made about the way that they were mistreated here on island. And, um, I bring that to our attention because you and I have been trying very hard to try to get national attention to...
And so, in order to do that, we actually have to repeal a certain section of the law that then would basically prohibit dog racing in the future. And so, in Section Two of the bill, by repealing Section sixty-four point five of Article Two, Chapter sixty-four, Title Nine, Guam Code Annotated, we basically shut that window so that in the future, anybody who comes back and applies for a license to start up a dog racetrack will be prohibited from doing so. And then, we have also put in additional language, which actually prohibits any betting or wagering on the speed or ability of dogs, and it prohibits the Department of Revenue and Tax and any other government agencies from accepting or approving any applications or requests for any canine racing-related activities. So, that, Madam Speaker, is really the gist of Bill 406. It basically just takes that one last step, that after the greyhound racing shut down, and they all left the island, we gotta go back and shut that door, and we can do that by basically repealing the authority to be able to open up a dog racing facility. I would ask my colleagues to please support the bill, and I certainly, I think we would go a long ways in ensuring better treatment of, or preventing the maltreatment of animals, at least through this activity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Etta. On the motion, I recognize Senator Frank Hagen, Jr.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, the last few days, this legislative body was working on several proposals to save lives, and we just concluded on another measure to save resources for Government of Guam, and now we're gonna save some dogs. So, it's been a very good week, very productive week in terms of trying to save something. But, Madam Speaker, as the committee that had the privilege to be able to hear and to receive comments on behalf of the members of the body, I stand in full support of Bill 406. And there was a particular species, and I'll call this dog, this greyhound dog Ebony, which is the name that was reported to us, apparently, one of the owners brought the dog into the public hearing room, and showed us basically what the dog looks like extremely healthy and being well cared for. And then, also, there were a couple photos that were circulated about the mistreatment of these dogs, when in fact, they were released out to the public not too long ago. And we all can recall and reflect on those experiences in terms of the mistreatment and the lack of feeding and whatever, or however we wanna refer to it. But, I have to look at some of our prior members of this body who authorized this particular activity. And along with that authorization was a funding source called the Paramutual Tax that was generated as a result of this activity that went to educational purposes. A good portion of that was directed towards the Guam Community College for some of the trades and technical training that that institution had provided prior to the closure of the Guam Greyhound activities. And also, it went to some other areas within the Government of Guam that needed those resources. But you know, Madam Speaker, when you look at how this legislation came about, and you look, you listen intently to the sponsor of the legislation about highlighting the rationale and the trend nationwide in terms of being able to move away from dog racing, because there's a strong correlation, to some extent, of mistreatment of these animals, I think it only bodes well to continue to work in the direction of saving man's best friend, and that's the dog, or a person's best friend, let me rephrase that, because there are a lot of women out there that also own dogs. So I stand in full support, Madam Speaker, of this legislation, and certainly will vote in support of it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Hagen. On the motion, I recognize the Vice Speaker, and then Senator Guthurts.
Just very quickly, Madam Speaker, I just thought I'd bring it to the attention of our colleagues about the black eye that this community took because of the mistreatment of these animals and the greyhound. While I was in California, one of the news stations did an anniversary news story, one year after, and it was featured on Los Angeles TV, and I believe throughout the country, about the fact that two-hundred dogs from Guam had to be airlifted, and they showed pictures of the dogs, and the scathing comments that were made about the way that they were mistreated here on island. And I bring that to our attention, because you and I have been trying very hard to try to get national attention to what's happening here on Guam, and the fact that the mainstream media in the United States hasn't been covering what's happening with the buildup. And unfortunately, this incident with the dogs was preceded the day before from the fight that incurred in this other room with some of our elected officials, and the comment about Guam tipping over. And it's just unbelievable that though we try to get responsible reporting about your trip to Washington, or to try to fight for our island, we can't get the mainstream media to do it, but because of the mistreatment of the dogs, we're seen as an inhumane community in the Pacific. And I'm hoping that this legislation goes through, because we obviously don't know how to treat these animals correctly, and we shouldn't bring them back if we're not going to treat them humanely.
Thank you very much, Senator Vice Speaker. Senator Guthurts, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, a year ago, when this all started, it was very hard to get the attention of this government to intervene on behalf of these animals.
Is your mic on, Senator Guthurts?
I think so. Oh, I'm sorry. A year ago, it was very difficult to get the attention of this government to intervene on behalf of these animals. Repeatedly, some members of this legislature, including my office, wrote to the Department of Agriculture to urge them to go down to the greyhound facility to inspect the animals and to assist in helping to identify individuals who would be able to house these animals so that they would not be placed on the streets. We didn't get much support. As a matter of fact, in some cases, we were ridiculed for taking such a strong position. But the results speak for themselves. We owe a great debt of gratitude to Guam animals in need, to Mr. Davis, who headed up the initiative on his own to look for and rescue these animals, and to get them adopted off-island and some on-island. We have some very fine people in our community that adopted some of these greyhounds, and they indeed are beautiful animals today. If you see them today, it's unbelievable how they have recovered with human care and families around them. But this bill is essential. Never again should we ever see money become more important than the credibility of this government in terms of how we treat people and how we treat animals. In addition, Madam Speaker, I wanna make one point, and I'm glad that our colleague brought up the original law and how it was established in this legislature long before us to allow for this activity, this paramutual dog racing activity on Guam. The excuse and justification was to provide money to education. And it's very interesting how these gaming initiatives are always said to be important because they'll provide money for education. Deceptive lies, untrue claims contributed very little to education. I'm very proud of my colleagues here, who will stand up and support this bill. Never again, Madam Speaker, never again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthurts. On the motion, I recognize Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this legislation. I think it continues the progress that we're making in terms of trying to enact public policy that provides a greater wholesomeness maybe about our community, if you wanna say and characterize it in that. I think people kinda just maybe are afraid to mention just what this is. I mean, sure, we don't wanna be cruel to the dogs, and how it gave our community an international black eye because of the way the owners of this establishment treated the shutdown process, but it also, I think, you know, we wanna say that it helps us get rid of a form of gambling in our community, pure and simple. And the effects, you know, we kinda are skirting around the issue, but when greyhound was in its heyday, you know, the excuse was, well, you know, it takes you thirty minutes to lose your money, because the races take place every thirty minutes. And so, it's really not like gambling with the casinos, because the casinos, you can lose your entire paycheck with three pools of the one-armed bandits, or the poker machines. But it is gambling, and with all the elements, and with all the diversion of economic resources for individuals as well as families, that is taken away for support of the individual and the family structure that gets plowed into this gambling, it makes for a less viable community for raising our families and our children. And so, I think that, sure, that no additional dog's gonna suffer on Guam, but to be treated inhumanely with, in a racing facility, it also means that we won't have, in the future, an avenue come back that will divert time, resources, attention to the family structure in a form of gambling that is offered by providing this kind of activity in our community. So, it is for that reason that I stand in opposition, I mean, I'm sorry, in opposition to allowing the window to stay open, and that, and stand in support of closing that opportunity and that activity from ever resurfacing on our island, that will, once again, divert the resources and the attention, the love and the nurturing of time spent with family members to participate in this kind of gambling activity. So I want to say and thank the author for providing this piece of legislation, and I think it will go a long ways. You know, when we would say, well, you know, then what's gonna happen to all the economic activity that's lost? Well, you know, I think that that money got spent in better places than it was being spent at before, when gambling was taking place in the facility. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I thank the author for his introduction, and he has my support. Thank you. Senator Massey.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. All right, is there anybody else? Senator Tom Etta, then, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to, of course, thank the, my colleagues who have rose in support and spoke in support of the bill, and I would just ask the rest of my colleagues to favorably consider this bill, because I think it's good for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On the motion, then, to send Bill 406 to the third reading file without any objections, so, Senator Esposito?
I'd like to recognize the main sponsor of this bill. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 412-30 as substituted by the Committee on Education to the third reading file, and I'd like to just briefly explain what it is.
On the motion with discussion, please proceed.
Thank you again very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we had passed the Guam Academy Charter of School Legislation, it is Public Law 29-140, and in the bill, an amendment was placed in by our colleagues, basically requiring that when the council meets and that they have a quorum, that they are to submit recommendations to the legislature on some of the sections of the bill that needs further clarification, or to give it some teeth in implementing the Academy Charter Schools. And I'd just like to just briefly explain what they are, as, and I'm gonna go through the bill with all the underscore recommendations. And the very first thing is that with the Appeals Board, it gave the breakdown, that's the existing law, but as we all know, is that the superintendent, or any of the presidents from the University of Guam and the Guam Community College, or the Attorney General, or the public auditor, that if they are unable to make it, that their designee would be accepted to attend the meeting. On page two, the schedule that was actually provided by law, they found it to be too short a time, and that what they wanted to do, that rather than in January, in which then they are to, individuals can submit an application, that it would be best in August, and then a whole-year timeframe then would be allowed before the actual implementation. The third recommendation was that they be given, then the council be given sixty days after they have approved or denied a petition, that then, that a public hearing then would be held on that petition. The other is that, and this is a concern, because many times, small-type councils that really don't meet every day, and maybe just a couple of days in a year, that there wasn't a reason to establish a place for them, so to speak, and have employees that would only be needed for a very short period of time. And this is very similar to what we've done as well with the post-secondary, post-secondary commission, that they do get support, clerical administrative support, rather than just the individual departments, but instead, in this case, the Guam Certification Office, and that the council also would be able to utilize the office of the Attorney General for any legal counsel, or unless somehow by law we're gonna authorize them to hire, but they're operating with a zero budget, so that will be, at this point, out of the question. The legislation, the law itself had said that they should ensure that they, you know, their compliance to the law, to ensure that these reports get done, but it didn't really have enough teeth, so then they felt that rather than ensuring that these are being done, that it would be best to monitor, to make sure that the, these schools are actually do complying with the law. And that, and then the other is, in Section 11, is that the charter granted to the academy school shall remain in force for at least a period of five years unless, the amendment is, unless revoked by, you know, the legislature or this particular chapter. They feel that an appeals board is important, and that the appeal board also then have a number of days in which their decisions can be appealed. They don't want to think that just because they've made a decision for or against, that there may not be any appeal, but they, that they know that there may be cases, so that when the council makes a decision, that it can actually go before and be appealed, if they need to, you know, to reverse a decision, or, well, yeah, to reverse primarily a decision. And the last is, oh, and the budget, is that rather than, it's just a process that we've done with other agencies, is that the concern was that if it was gonna pass through, because these are public schools, that, you know, that rather than it then going before the board for approval, that it's just a submission to the superintendent, who will then submit it to the legislature, like she would with the education budget. And lastly, is that if children, our children are participating in these academies, that they would have this reciprocity as well in terms of accepting and transferring of credits, because after all, it is a public school. So that's the gist of what Bill Number 412 is all about. And I ask my colleagues to support these recommended changes. We've been working with the council, they, like I said, they don't have a home, but they have, we've offered for them to use our conference rooms to meet. They have, since they started meeting, every single member has been in attendance. They're taking their jobs very seriously. They've even, have gone online to do more research, they've even wanting to get a subscription to be able to be on the list, so that they can not just educate themselves, but more important is to make the right decision and the best decision for applicants who come before them. So I ask my colleagues to, you know, consider supporting this legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other senator wishing to speak on Bill 412? If not, I guess Senator Spaldan.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this legislation. At the onset, I'm gonna state the obvious, that when the initial Public Law 29-14 was introduced, I was a co-sponsor, I was the second co-sponsor of this bill, second or third co-sponsor of this bill. And the reason why we went down this road is because we wanted to find different avenues to stimulate our children into learning more, and perhaps by thinking outside the box, by providing the avenue of charter schools, which have worked successfully in other jurisdictions, and of course, in some other jurisdictions, also, there have been problems. But this was one avenue in which we felt that we should explore. Now, with the formation of the council, in accordance with that public law, we knew, first of all, that since this is unchartered, no pun intended, territory in terms of education, that there would have to be some massaging of, and addressing of some issues that perhaps we did not foresee. And when the council, as the previous speaker has mentioned, when the council did meet, and as they have continually met, to address how to move forward on the charter schools, they have identified problem areas in which, again, only legislation could rectify. And because of their diligence, they have come up with these recommendations, and because they have been studying the operation of charter schools in those jurisdictions, and trying to see how we can best, come up with the best solution to moving forward on charter schools on this island, they have provided their input. And because of that input, the good author of this legislation has basically addressed those problematic areas by introducing this bill. And so, because we are still trying to really define and better the legislation, the initial Public Law 29-140, which this does address, then we definitely, it behooves us to support the recommendations by the board that was formed to address the charter school issue. So I stand in full support of this legislation. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Spaldan. Any other senators wishing to speak on this bill? If not, I'd like to ask Speaker Wampat if she'd like to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I thank the previous speaker as well. I'd just like to also let everyone know is that the board that we have in particular really are doing a great job, they're not looking at it just to say that they wanna take that perspective more, so to speak, that, you know, whether one is to go actually against it-
that, uh, you know, um, whether one is to go actually against it or, um, uh, just be gung ho, uh, you know, for the, the council because we do have a member, uh, you know, Rosa Paloma, who actually had, uh, has been on, now on both sides, uh, of the aisles of being a, a board member of Guam, um, DOE. And now she's on this council and has really opened her mind to, to, um, looking at, you know, how the council then can provide an outer, an alternative, uh, to, you know, our children. But more importantly is to protect the fact that they are public school children and that these are public schools, uh, although, yes, with a different title. So I ask my colleagues to support this, um, and allow them then to be able to have the tools that they need to continue on as they address, uh, some of the applications that, uh, you know, they have or, and others that are actually considering in, um, submitting to them. Thank you very much, and I, I move then that it be placed in the voting file.
Thank you very much. On the motion to place, uh, bill four twelve in the voting file, there be no objections. Motion carries. The, uh, sponsor for bill three-three-seven is, um, not here. So pursuant to that motion, it reverts, that bill reverts to the bottom of the agenda. I'd like to recognize, uh, on the matter of bill number three-six-two dash thirty, the main spa- oh, I'm sorry, he's here. Sorry. Bill three-three-seven. Perfect timing, sorry. Senator Uggan, uh, bill three-three-seven dash thirty.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker, and I apologize, I was right out the, uh, in the public hearing room trying to take care of some other matters. Uh, Mr. Speaker and to our fellow colleagues, bill number three-three-seven is, if you take a look at the title, it, I think it's self-explanatory, but I understand that the, there's a number of senators in the halls that perhaps would like to take a different approach in terms of providing Guam more hospital authority, a little bit more flexibility in terms of the financial resources. You know, having been chair of healthcare, the health committee over the course of the last year and a half, there have been some very, uh, close incidents where unfortunately, our one public hospital had experienced some serious challenges with cash flow. And it's no hidden secret, you know, I think that also in cer- such a circumstances, we have other government agencies that experience similar situations. But in this case, bill number three-three-seven would provide GMH a secured funding source for the dedicated purpose of reducing outstanding debt service payments and for providing financial relief in GMH's borrowing ability and support in its operations. I'd like to also, Mr. Speaker, extend my appreciation to the Chair of Finance who had worked on this particular legislation and also had incorporated some additional amendments in terms of ensuring that we're able to, to get this entertained on the floor and hopefully pass by this body. There's no need for, for me, I guess, to, to expound anymore than just understanding that GMH continues to experience challenges financially. You know, it's interesting that every time that the, the fees and the rates are adjusted, one of the questions that I always propose is how much do you anticipate to generate as a result of these adjustments in your fees? And then a, uh, very generous number would be forwarded in the millions and the end result is somewhat different in terms of the actual resources. And I guess we all understand that our one public hospital has a mandate, a mandate by local law that requires that it services any individual that needs medical attention as they approach that particular facility. And that mandate has continued to be a challenge for this community in terms of being able to try to meet that obligation and trying to close the gap. There's a few things that this body had worked on previously. One was, I recall back, if you recall several legislatures back, Mr. Speaker, that we had provided financial relief of borrowing approximately twenty-seven million dollars and diverting it over to GMHA and allowing them to utilize it to pay off obligations to the retirement fund and also to pay off some other capital requirements. That was many legislatures ago, about five legislatures ago, if I'm not mistaken, or six. Then you turn the clock up and then you continue to look at other areas when in fact this body had stepped forward recognizing the financial challenges of that institution. Just very recently, and, and if I can just report that, based on the eleven million dollars that was provided in the bond proceeds from July of last year, the emergency room right now is projected to be expanded, the, with the use of those resources. And also the intensive care unit is projected to undergo an expansion so that it can accommodate some additional patients as they approach hospital and they require a di- that necessary treatment. So that's where some of these resources are going and a lot of it is, is perhaps especially in light of dealing with the military buildup, there's gonna be a, a tremendous package that's gonna be forwarded to this body down the road in terms of what the financial requirements will be to accommodate the anticipated growth in civilian commu- in the civilian community as a result of the military buildup. So I certainly hope that we can also, at this body can, can be able to work collectively in, in addressing some of those financial requirements. But, uh, other than that, Mr. Speaker, this is more or less to provide financial flexibility and a slight relief so that they can take care of operational requirements. Not necessarily CIP, capital improvement projects, not necessarily other fixed asset procurement or purchases, but really either capital outlay, which is equipment and supplies, or up, meet some of their operational needs. And I ask our colleagues for their consideration in terms of being able to look at this legislation and let's provide our one public hospital that additional flexibility as provided for herein. In terms of the specifics, Mr. Speaker, it will dedicate, uh, approximately no less than a million dollars of taxes as, which is generated to the Health Futures Fund, which are go directly to a special fund to be managed and administered by GMH, only to address debt service or bond payment requirements. One of the options that GMH was looking at is going into the bond market and securing anywhere from twenty to about thirty million dollars with the use of these proceeds. But I know that there are other approaches that may be perhaps a little bit more palatable in terms of providing GMH with that flexibility. So, Mr. Speaker, with that in mind, I ask for the consideration of the members of the body and certainly look forward to a lively discussion. Jesus Massey.
Thank you very much, uh, Senator Uggan. Any senators wishing to speak on the bill? Speaker Pangolinen, bill three-three-seven.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, I certainly rise in support of, uh, the bill. Uh, and I wanted to offer an amendment, uh, that I think, um,
Four-three-three.
It certainly accomplishes, uh, the same thing, but may provide a little bit more, uh, financial flexibility for, for the hospital. Uh, I have the bill, the amendment, if I can get a copy made, uh, just a short recess while we.
Yeah, we'll take a, uh, one-minute recess. For legislative back inception.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, uh, would like to offer an amendment that's been passed out. As, as the good author, uh, of the, uh, legislation, um, certainly explained, you know, we're challenged with providing continued resources to meet the healthcare needs of community. Uh, and even greater challenge because we have but one hospital, one public hospital, that is, to support the, uh, needs of our community. Uh, and we're even greater cha- challenged even to a greater extent because that hospital, uh, has the mandate to ensure that it treats every patient that shows up at its door regardless of the ability to pay. And the hospital does try and, and, uh, certainly tries very hard, uh, to collect, uh, payment for services that it provides. And in some instances, uh, it just can't. And so this body has continually looked for ways to support the operational needs of the hospital, uh, as well as of course, providing resources for capital improvement, uh, uh, projects at the hospital. But one of the greatest challenges that the hospital face, it's the day-to-day financial resource requirements to, one, meet its pay- payroll to the employees, two, provide the necessary supplies to operate the hospital, uh, and then plan for future expansion, uh, and acquisition of capital equipment to support its mission. Um, so the hospital runs short of cash, uh, on a lot of, in, in a lot of instances. And one of the ways that this body had decided to help the hospital deal with that is to provide them line of credit authority, that it can on a revolving line of credit, go out and borrow money, uh, to support from the resources that it has. And so the hospital has the authorization to go and borrow money to meet short-term, uh, cash requirements to meet its mission. The problem is that when it does go out to solicit lines of authority, there's no dedicated payment source, uh, to ensure that the lender will be repaid and the hospital can pay down that line of credit. And it's important that we look at the line of credit because, uh, that allows, uh, the, the hospital to get immediate infusion of cash, pay it with its collections and improvements and its efficiencies and, and growth within its services and improvement within its col- its ability to collect for these payments, pay that down, and then it has another, uh, opportunity to, uh, to, uh, have a reserved, uh, capital, uh, reserve through the line of credit access. And so the, uh, bill as written by the author would provide it for debt service and so forth, so it could apply to that line of credit. Uh, but I wanted to be a bit more specific, uh, in terms of allowing the hospital this revolving capital, uh, reserve, uh, through the line of credit, paying it down, accessing it again. If we take this one million dollars that we give to the hospital and for example, they buy a new MRI machine, uh, with the yearly appropriation, um, they've gotta do one of two things. They either gotta pay off the loan, uh, before they can even draw on this line of credit for any other needs of the hospital, or, uh, they gotta refinance the loan. And so that takes time, resources, the ability to do those things, uh, may take anywhere from two months, three months to a year to free up this million-dollar capacity for additional, uh, access to financial resources. So what I'm proposing in the amendment would be that we take this one million dollars and dedicate it to the repayment of the twelve-million-dollar line of credit authority that the hospital currently has. And so, uh, Mr. Speaker, um, the bill would propose to do that. The problem is that the version I gave to you does not include the citation of that twelve-million-dollar li- line of credit. It is in this version where that exists, and I have that. So it where it says to be inserted, it would be funding for the line of credit pursuant to eight-oh-one-oh-four-T, chapter eighty, division four, title ten, Guam code annotated. So what they would do is take this one million, put it in this account. If they don't draw on a line of credit, then they can use the one million. Uh, but it allows them, for example, if, if this year they need ten million dollars, they go out, they use the one million security, they take a ten-million-dollar loan for, you know, five years. They pay it down next, neck, and they pay down a million of that this year. Next year, in the next fiscal year, they'll have now, um, back up to their twelve-million-dollar line of autho- or they're now back up to three million, so they can have a revolving line of credit to meet immediate needs of the hospital, short-term financial needs that gets repaid on a yearly basis with this one million line of authority. So that gives greater flexibility. They don't have to refinance the loan, they don't have to go back and refinance a, a capital expenditure, uh, project. They just have a revolving line of credit, uh, with guaranteed support for repayment so that it can, um, be repaid, drawn upon, repaid, drawn upon as the hospital, uh, collects the money and pays it down from either this, uh, appropriation itself or from its greater efficiencies and, and collections, uh, when it has the, uh, the, when it does collect more money and increases in efficiency. So it really meets the same objective, uh, quite well. And I think it gives greater flexibility to the hospital in meeting, um, more immediate and short-term needs, which is really one of the greatest challenges of running that hospital up there. The long-term capital planning for, uh, for the, um, uh, improvement of services and facilities, really we can, we can take greater time, find other resources, federal grants, compact impact. All of these, uh, we can dedicate for the long-term, uh, fin- uh, capital needs of the hospital improvements and equipment. But what is the greatest challenge we have is these short-term financial needs to meet shortfalls in collections, uh, that, uh, means we can't pay a vendor, uh, so that we can take advantage of greater discounts. So this, eh, revolving line of credit will allow the flexibility for the hospital to draw, draw upon it, make these short-term financial commitments that will allow the hospital to gr- to, to access greater discounts, greater, uh, uh, assuredy that, that they can pay the drugs and the vendors, uh, so that we can pay that down. And so it would dedicate this one million to, to payment of that revolving line of credit. Uh, and, uh, this would achieve improvement of the financial stability of the hospital as well as improve the financial efficiency of the deployment of the financial resources available to the hospital. And I, I asked my colleagues for their support on this, um, on this let, this, uh, amendment. Thank you, and, and I'll make sure the clerk has the appropriate, uh, version of the amendment.
Thank you, Speaker Pangolinen. Anyone wishes to speak on the Pangolinen, um, Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if, just based on the, uh, comments of the retiring speaker, I certainly stand in support of, of the amendment. Just also understanding and emphasizing that this would no longer allow GMH to go out and proceed for a direct loan, but utilize the existing, uh, revolving fund that it presently, or line of credit that it presently has in place. So this is, eh, this is a mechanism, and I think that it would also enhance the ability of the hospital to be able to move in the direction of what we need to provide it. And that's operational financial support, and this mechanism is, is certainly appreciated. And I thank the retiring speaker for. And I thank the retiring speaker for his proposal. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any other senators wish to be heard on the Pangolinan amendment? Is there any objection to the Pangolinan amendment? Oh, Senator Espaldón, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm wondering if the author of the amendment may yield to a question. And the question essentially is that would this amendment preclude the GMH from using this money to pay vendors directly from this fund? I mean, you know, again, I'm not clear as to whether, if we include this language, whether this is basically to, and again, I don't have the full language here in terms of citing the section, so I just need to ask the question.
Yes. The amendment, again, substitutes this debt thing for this revolving line of credit. So it would definitely, I think it would dedicate this for a payment source when they draw upon the line of credit. So they wouldn't take the $1 million and pay vendors directly from the $1 million. They would, because they can do that from their current operational requirements. And the problem is that they need more than $1 million to meet the immediate financial needs. And the idea was to leverage this $1 million a year that they get to meet the greater short-term need of more than $1 million, whereas the hospital is short, you know, $3 million, $5 million. They draw upon it, pay that down, and continue to draw upon that as they pay down the line of credit. But it would, yes, be dedicated for this line of credit to ensure greater resource than a single million-dollar appropriation every year, to ensure a more, a short-term financial stability by providing that revolving line. So, yes, I would say, yes, it would. It's dedicated for the payment of the debt service or the payment for the debt service on the drawdown of the line of credit.
Okay. And I appreciate that.
And that's, according to the hospital, that's their more immediate need, rather than the single one-time appropriations, which solves a single problem. And then now, we don't have that million, but we have another $3 million we have to find for drugs. So this revolving line of credit with a dedicated payment source solves that problem to a greater degree than the single appropriations.
Senator Espaldón, does that address your?
It does, Mr. Speaker. And again, with that answer, and I appreciate that answer, and I fully understand that explanation. I'm just going through the whole analysis in my head whether that really is the most effective way to basically appropriate these funds. But with that being said, I will yield the floor at this time. Thank you.
Any other senator wish to be heard on the Pangolinan amendment? Is there an objection to the Pangolinan amendment? Hearing no objection. On the main bill. On the main bill. Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, again, I have a question to the author of the main bill. And this is concerning page, on page two, line 12. Actually, it's the whole paragraph. It basically reads, "An annual allocation of $1 million as appropriate pursuant to this subsection D shall continue and shall remain in full force and effect until specifically revoked or amended pursuant to law. I have no problem with that sentence." The next sentence then reads, "As taxes are received and deposited into the fund, a pro rata share of available funds shall subsequently be transferred to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority." The question I have is, what's a pro rata share? A pro rata share of what? If the author would yield to that question.
Does the author yield? Please, Senator Ogden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Senator. In regards to, first of all, let me just clarify that the term "their fund", with a capital F, if you take a look at the entire context of this code, it's a direct reference to the general fund. So as taxes are received and deposited into the general fund, then a pro rata share of the available funds. Pro rata in terms of getting to a point that upon the closure of the fiscal year, that GMHA can be assured that there will be a million dollars in that, in their special fund that they can utilize to offset or to pay their debt service on the line of credit. That's the purpose of it. And so that, in other words, not by the sixth month of the fiscal year is GMH expected to have a million dollars in their account. Based on the level of funds coming in, it provides that additional flexibility, if I may, Mr. Speaker and good Senator, it provides that flexibility on the part of the executive branch to be able to manage the resources and say, in this case, we're not receiving as much resources as we otherwise had anticipated. We're going to continue to provide it to you as long as you get the million-dollar assurance by the close of the fiscal year. That's what it means.
Again, Mr. Speaker, I do appreciate that, but I'm not really sure that's quite clear. Because if we're talking about taxes received into the general fund, and we're to receive a pro rata share of the available funds, I would, first of all, I'm assuming we're talking about the available funds that are supposed to go to the Healthy Futures Fund. But what, the question then begs again, what is the pro rata share of the Healthy Futures Fund? In other words, it seems to be ambiguous, to the point where a certain amount will not get dedicated because we're not really sure what the pro rata share of what is.
Senator Ogden, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Senator. You bring up some very, very, very good questions. As a matter of fact, if you take a look at Section 3, it's a general provision that says, "All accompanying parts of this particular section remain unchanged." The reason we did not regurgitate or repeat the entire section is that it encompasses, I believe, about eight to 10 pages. We were trying to save a few trees. That's why, and I highlighted the reference of the fund to the general fund. The taxes would be the Healthy Futures Fund. And I tried to perhaps utilize less paper, but if the good speaker, Mr. Speaker, would like me to get a copy of the entire text, then we can probably pull that out in terms of the legislation that you had sponsored as it applied to the adjustment. This, if I may just close with this, Mr. Speaker and good Senator. When we're looking at the million dollars pro rata, as of April 5th, there was that adjustment in terms of the tobacco taxes increase. And based on that, that's where this legislation came in so that it would not affect any existing programs and the minimum allocation that they're presently receiving out of the Healthy Futures Fund. So I just wanted to make sure that our colleagues have that assurance. But I did that for trying to shorten the proposed measure, Senator, and it wasn't to try to confuse the whole situation, but it's just not to provide the additional context or contents. But if you would like me to pull out the entire legislation, we can do so.
Do you wish to have a recess to address this?
Not necessarily. Again, and I don't want the good author of this bill to have to pull out that whole section. My only concern is, we're talking about a pro rata share, and I'm not really sure that I understand, or anybody who may be reading this, even with the inclusion of the total bill. What a pro rata share, a pro rata share of what? In other words, are we talking about a pro rata share of the Healthy Futures Fund? How can you have a pro rata share of the Healthy Futures Fund when we don't even know what that amount will be? Because that amount is dependent upon, say, for example, in the case of the increased taxes for tobacco products, we're not really sure what that amount's going to be. So how can you determine a pro rata share, a percentage, of something that you have no knowledge of what the total amount is? I guess that's the point I'm trying to make. So going forward, how do you appropriate something? How do you appropriate a percentage of something that you're not really certain what the total amount is? And maybe it is time for a 30-second, a short recess.
We'll take a short recess.
Thank you.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Espaldón, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the recess because with the good author, I was able, we were able to work out a more definitive number so that it's not ambiguous. And the reason why it was important to me, even though it was a technicality, is that I wanted to assure that GMH actually got the money. There was a possibility, if there is an ambiguity in this law in terms of the pro rata share of an unknown figure, that the money may never get transferred to GMH. And if somebody challenged that and said, "Well, they owe us", the agency responsible for transferring those funds would then say, "Well, you know, legally, it's too ambiguous, and, you know, we didn't know what to do." So just to make sure, and again, I support this legislation, just to make sure that GMH gets the necessary funding, that we would like to be more concise, excuse me, more precise and articulate in terms of what we're talking about. So, Mr. Speaker, I move to amend, to make an amendment on page two, line number 12, which reads, "As taxes are received and deposited into the fund, comma, we strike a pro rata share of available funds", and replace that with the words, "At least one-twelfth of $1 million".
Does the clerk have that?
That's the amendment to that section. And then there's one last amendment to that sentence. So it will read, "At least one-twelfth of $1 million shall subsequently be transferred", and insert the word "monthly", "to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. That way, we're some certain that X amount, at the very least, one-twelfth of $1 million will be transferred into the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority so that it can be used to provide debt relief to the hospital."
Does everybody understand that amendment being proffered by Senator Espaldón? Anybody wish to be heard on the Espaldón?
Okay, and so if I may just read the whole thing in its entirety, then. As amended, it would read on line 12, "As taxes are received and deposited into the fund, at least one-twelfth of $1 million shall subsequently be transferred monthly to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority." One-twelfth, at least one-twelfth. In other words, I'm sorry. At least one-twelfth. In other words, if we can pay more, at least the floor is one-twelfth of $1 million. It could be higher until you get to $1 million. Very good.
Do we have, is that going to be a subsequent amendment?
Well, I tell you what, it might be lunch. Why don't we just write this all out, and then after lunch, just go ahead and...
All right, that's...
It seems to be that there'll, you know, a few people...
Let's recess until 2:00.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, one way, the other.
Good afternoon, Tallawanna Sodus. This legislature is called back into session. When we last left off, we were still in Bill 337, Senator Ogden's bill. We had an amendment, and Senator Espaldón was still speaking on his amendment. And then we recessed for lunch. So... So Senator Espaldon, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just to bring us back up to speed, this bill by Senator Uggins basically proposes to give GMH one million dollars for its operations from the Healthy Futures Fund. And the amendment basically is just to make sure that we're very articulate and about how this money gets deposited into, into the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority account. And so, the amendment that I have right now, Madam Speaker, is on relative to page two, line 12, and the, I'll read it as it is right now, just to refresh everybody's memory. On line 12, it reads, "As taxes are received and deposited into the fund, a pro-rata share of one million dol, of available funds shall subsequently be transferred to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority." And the concern to me, and again, discussing with the author of the bill and several other senators, our colleagues here, is that that may be ambiguous and in consequence to that, because of possible ambiguity, that funds may never get transferred in to, for GMH to use. So to make sure that there is no doubt that this is the intent by this body to move one million dollars into Guam Memorial Hospital Authority account, on page two, line 12, we will delete the words, quote, "a pro-rata share of available funds," and instead insert, quote, "at least one-twelfth of one million dollars." And then on line 13, insert, after the word "transferred," the word "monthly." And the final amendment to this sentence will be under line 14. After the word "authority," we basically delete the period and insert, quote, the words, the following words, "the total amount not to exceed one million dollars per fiscal year." So the sentence now will read, "As taxes are received and deposited into the fund, a, at least one-twelfth of one million dollars shall subsequently be transferred monthly to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the total amount not to exceed one million dollars per fiscal year." And Madam Speaker, that is my amendment.
Thank you, Senator Espaldon. Does anybody wish to speak on the amendment? No objection? Motion carries. We are still now back to the main motion. Do we have anybody wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Frank Uggins, would you like to close on your bill?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank and extend my appreciation to those who have participated in the discussion, and also in making the legislation much better than its original version. You know, when you take a look at the finances of the Guam Memorial Hospital, and obviously we receive a copy of the annual audit report, or the audit report every year with regards to the financial status of that institution. And we can recognize right off the bat that revenues versus expenses, as well as long-term investment requirements, shows that, in fact, there are some dire needs for assistance in terms of rendering additional support to our one public hospital. And in this particular case, this legislation would provide one million dollars as seed money to be utilized towards debt service, not for operational expenses, but specifically for debt service, to be able to allow for GMH to continue to use their line of credit, which is, I believe, at a figure at this point in time of about twelve million dollars. So with this type of support, I did speak to a hospital administrator up at GMH a little earlier, and he would like to, Mr. Peter John Camacho, he would like to extend his appreciation to the body for even considering this and providing that additional flexibility for addressing operational requirements of our one public hospital. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to also highlight, while I still have the opportunity to speak and close on this legislation, that obviously, GMH over the course of the last year, at least year and a half, has progressed to where it is today, where in fact, it had initially received a conditional accreditation or preliminary accreditation. It had gone through an additional visit within the last two months, where the accreditation team has requested some follow-up information, and hopefully, all of that would result in full accreditation of this particular institution. In the meantime, they've also, management has also used the, or is in the process of applying the use of the eleven million dollars, which this body approved last year through the float of the general fund obligation bond. We provided eleven million dollars in future to GMH specifically for capital spending projects, of which they will be expanding the intensive care unit, which I mentioned a little earlier, in addition to the emergency room. So those particular projects are ongoing with the RFP, and hopefully will be done within a reasonable timeframe. That in conjunction with the accreditation of the educational credits program, and then some other accolades that speak very highly of GMH and their existing management, I wanted to mention that because I think it shows that, yes, in fact, we have a wonderful facility up at GMH that still, to this very day, continues to experience financial challenges in meeting its operational requirements, but in the same token, is able to attain some of these additional accolades or accomplishments in terms of moving in the direction of full accreditation and being able to attain that indefinitely forward. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to also say that with the recent enactment of the Healthcare Reform Act, regardless as to what position we take, whether we support it generally speaking from as representatives of this community or not, by 2014, all U.S. citizens will be required to have some form of health insurance coverage. So by 2014, the thirty-plus percent, I believe the last figure at the last public discussion with GMH officials was that approximately thirty-plus or thirty-seven percent of all of their self-pay customers have been deemed almost as uncollectible, although they continue to try to pursue collection efforts, that thirty-seven cents of the dollar on an annual basis is extremely difficult for that institution to collect. That says a lot. But as we move in the direction of healthcare reform, and everyone being able to attain health insurance by 2014, I think that that would provide some additional financial relief to our public hospital in terms of ensuring that individuals that are U.S. citizens, that are able to obtain services and medical treatment at our one public hospital, would in some form have the ability to be able to repay the services and the treatment that they receive then from that point forward. And I think that both well financially in terms of just looking forward, but obviously, we need to fill the gap. And filling the gap means continuing to provide resources, such as the chairman of finance, securing the percentage of the GRTs to continue to pay down on MIP obligations to GMH, in conjunction with that, looking at measures such as this, to provide additional financial flexibility to the management as well as to the board of trustees over at GMH so that they can carry out their responsibility and provide safe and quality healthcare services to every single individual that is treated at our one and only public hospital facility. So I wanted to mention some of those items, but most especially to all of our colleagues here, I ask you and I encourage you to support this endeavor and this legislation because it's only going to assist our hospital in their operational requirements. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggins. On the motion to place Bill 337 in the voting file, there being no objection, motion carries. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 362-30. I'd like to ask the main sponsor, she make her presentation at this time. Senator Barnes?
Sodhu Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move Bill number 362-30COR as introduced by myself and Speaker Judith Juan Pat to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak briefly on it.
Okay, on the motion, please proceed.
Thank you. This Bill 362 is an act relative to renaming the South Dadee Do Buffer Strip, the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park, which extends partially across, across Lot Block 16A. The intent here, Mr. Speaker, is that the Dadee Do Veterans Organization, in conjunction with the Dadee Do Municipal Planning Council and the mayor of Dadee Do, seek to rename the strip of parcel identified as this South Dadee Do Buffer Strip, which is in Dadee Do, to the, to the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park. And it was in, in this effort, working closely with the community of Dadee Do, with the representatives from the municipal planning council, and also working closely with the mayors, that they identified this strip, and they wanted to rename this area as the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park. With that being said, Mr. Speaker, at the day of the public hearing, we heard from a couple of members from the Dadee Do Municipal Planning Council, we heard from the mayor of Dadee Do herself, we heard from the folks from the Guam Veterans Motorcycle Club, who were residents of Dadee Do, we heard from the representatives from the Filipino Scout War War II veterans who were there to support the effort, we heard from the Asia-Pacific Military Order of the Purple Heart, and we also heard testimony in support from the executive director, which is Mr. Angel Sablon, who is also a resident of Dadee Do, and all these folks who came to represent their different organizations came in and supported the efforts. There was a question that was asked, will anybody else, whether they're a veteran from the village or not, will they be able to utilize the place? And we said, "Of course, it's a public park. They would just have to do the, the regular scheduling, like what every, any other park does when they want to have a big gathering there." But if they wanted to come and, and, and sit and have a quiet lunch and all that, of course, as in all parks here on Guam, there is specific timelines on, on when parks can open or close. But other than that, they said that that was the only, one of the few inquiries that were there, and everybody else supported this bill. They asked, and they said that this would be a very positive thing. It would bring and gather a lot of veterans, not just from Dadee Do, but veterans around the island, to come to this place and, you know, relive memories, talk about whether it be the good old days or not, but also reminisce on, on what truly they've done to not just protect our island, protect our country, but also share in what they've done together to, to, to a cause that they believe that is what we live today, and that's our freedom. So I humbly ask that my colleagues, please look at this piece of legislation, give it their utmost support, and join me and Speaker Juan Pat in extending this request and the desire from the Dadee Do community to rename this access, this park, to the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park. With that being said, before I sit and ask my colleagues, I'd like to, if there's no objection, to add Senator Frank Blas Jr. as third, well, (laugh) who was on the committee report to add him, as third, third co-sponsor to this, and he did ask for his utmost apology when he forgot to put me on his bill, but he knows I support his bill. But if there's no objection, I'd like to put my brother Frank as their co-sponsor.
On the motion to place Senator Blas as the third co-sponsor, no objections. So ordered, Senator, Senator Uggins, then Speaker Pangolino. No, Senator, oh, oh, no, no, Senator Uggins, then Speaker, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think it, as an individual that has donned his uniform on a regular basis, obviously, I would be remiss if I didn't stand up to support any legislation that, in this particular case, would memorialize and recognize veterans in Dadee Do. And I say that specifically, but, Mr. Speaker, before I proceed with any additional comments, can I request or move that my good colleague, who's to my rear, who apparently has also donned his uniform and had reached the rank of a full-bird colonel, be made the fourth sponsor of this legislation after my good primu?
On the motion to place Senator, Senator, well, Senator Adon as the fourth sponsor, there being no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think, I think I mentioned the use of the term Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park, and I mentioned, I emphasized Dadee Do only because I think it's wonderful that we're looking at this particular organization, and I see that the, the good speaker, Madam Speaker, is now assuming the position, so the seat of speakership. So just for the people who are watching, no, I am not mixing genders as I apply my statements, but Madam Speaker, I'd like to highlight and, and just perhaps ask one general question to the primary sponsor of this legislation, because obviously, you look at this proposal, and it renames the particular buffer strip in Dadee Do, the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park. And please be mindful that I qualify my statement by, I pre-qualify my opening statement by saying that I certainly stand in support of this legislation. Now, we may be setting precedent, and maybe it's a precedent that we can absorb and allow for other members of this body to be able to identify a park within their specific jurisdiction and name it after their veterans in that particular vicinity. And it could be a good example in Jotniya if, in fact, I come up with a proposal that says, that renames a particular park, the Jotniya Veterans Memorial Park, I think it would only be isolated towards recognizing the Jotniya veterans. And I personally, I think that any time that we're naming a public facility after, aside from naming it after an individual and after his or her accomplishments, I think that, that it would be nice to see that, in fact, this park be named in memorial and infinitum after the veterans. So that's just a general perspective that I have, and I wanted to ask that question, Madam Speaker, to the primary sponsor of this legislation, if, if in fact, that was the intent, because it says here that it would rename it the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park, also upon the assumption of the necessary qualifications that the Dadee Do Veterans Organization would be able to maintain this park, and I think that that's extremely noble in addition to working with the Dadee Do mayor's office. But we're talking about a large park facility being named after a precinct-specific locale and commemorating veterans. So, Madam Speaker, if I can ask the good sponsor to just respond to that inquiry, if she would yield?
Can you please repeat, please repeat?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess the question is, is, I think it's, first of all, extremely noble, that this legislation would name a park after the veterans of Guam. That's my understanding. But the way the language reads and the naming of the park, it would read Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park. So it's locale-specific. Now, my question is, is was that, was that, and is it that the intent of this particular legislation? Because if any other member of this body identifies a park within their jurisdiction or identifies a park in the remaining eighteen villages in our island community, and would like to name it after their specific veterans organization in their village, then, of course, setting precedent. So that's the question I have. But, Madam Speaker, please, I don't want to take the potential, the possibility, and the recognition that it should rightfully be received by the Dadee Do Veterans Organization if they're willing to work with the Dadee Do mayor's office to maintain this park. So, so this is perhaps an issue and a question that I have, whether, in fact, that was the intent, and if that continues to be the intent, to name it the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park rather than the Veterans Memorial Park, and then recognize the Dadee Do veterans for their contribution and the maintenance of this particular park facility. So, Madam Speaker, I don't know if that's a question or a statement, but I wanted to understand exactly...
So Senator, you, you to the question?
Well, I'll try and answer the best I can based on, on the idea that the Dadee Do community had related to, first of all, they said they wanted to name it the Dadee Do Veterans Memorial Park because it is in the village of Dadee Do, it is that buffer strip in Dadee Do, and it was recognizing that Dadee Do is the village that it's in, and they were recognizing... and it was recognizing that Dedito is the village that it's in, and they were recognizing all the veterans that live in the village of Dedito. And it also did note that, just because it's going to be the Dedito Veterans Memorial Park, that it didn't mean that it wasn't open to any other veteran, in as far as utilization, or anybody from Guam from using or utilizing that park, because it's open to the public, but it would be in dedication to the veterans from the village, the beautiful village of Dedito. And they did, they did specify that in their, in their support for this. They were very, they were very firm in that, so...
Thank you very much, Senator, and Madam Speaker, I just, I mean, just based on the response, you know, being a veteran from a different village, and I'm sure that a number of the other veterans from other villages perhaps will share similar concerns about just making it locale-specific, you know, rather than, like I said, calling it the Veterans Memorial Park and paying direct tribute to the Dedito Veterans Organization for being able to, to be willingly, or to willingly work with the Mayor's Office in maintaining this facility. I take exception to that, although I'm not going to oppose it, Madam Speaker, I take real exception to that, because there are a lot of veterans in the wonderful village of Jiggle, there are a lot of veterans in the wonderful village of Baragada, villages of Tamuning, Jotniya, and the rest of the entire island community, and by virtue of keeping it locale-specific with name, I think it really does not pay tribute to all the veterans. It pays tribute to the Dedito's veterans, or the veterans who reside within the wonderful village of Dedito, and I have absolutely no problem with that, but naming a, a park and a public facility, if the intent is to memorialize and to pay tribute to the veterans, then it should be appropriately named, and then pay, then recognize any other organization that is willing to work in concert with the government of Guam to be able to properly maintain and upgrade this particular facility. So I do, I do take exception to making it locale-specific, Madam Speaker, but like I said a little earlier, I will not oppose it, the legislation, only because it does further pay tribute and recognize our veterans in our community, but there are a lot of other veterans in the eighteen other villages islandwide that I think appropriately should also be given that particular recognition. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Spaldan, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, the Speaker, former Speaker Ben.
Thank you, Senator Spaldan. Senator Panglinen, you recognize, and after you be Senator Spaldan. If there's anybody else, please indicate to me that you would like to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, it's, it's hard to kind of even insinuate any kind of concern with honoring any of our veterans for the service that they provide our country, because without the service that they provide, you know, my right and the freedom I have to stand here, and even come close to insinuating, would not be real, would not, would not be here today. But I do have, I, I share some of the same concerns. Are we, are we now going to keep, you know, doing that? But I, I support it. The other concern I had is just the description of the property, and so, and so, you know, we don't really know what the boundaries are of the park, where they're at, and so what I want, okay, so what I wanted to do was to just make an amendment, that would be to add a section, a new section three, which would be to just the Department of Land Management shall survey and mark the boundaries of the park, so that we know that, you know, is the park the entire dog strip, which is pretty huge, or is it a small, are we now carving out a small section of the park for the Vet, Dedito Veterans Memorial Park? Like we did in Skinner Plaza, for example, we have, we honor the Purple Heart organization, as you recall, we allowed them to erect a monument within Skinner Plaza on the corner there, to honor the Purple Heart recipients. And so, whatever and however big this park is going to be, that the boundary should be marked, so that if now we wanted to do another park out there, or dedicate another portion of that government strip for another organization, or another purpose, or another use, and we wanted to dedicate a public name to it, then it becomes readily evident where that will be also. So, again, sure, sure, yeah, so I guess maybe I, I'll extend my amendment to, the Dedito Municipal Planning Council and the Dedito Mayor shall coordinate the survey and delineation of the park boundaries with the Department of Land Management. So that they can actually, you know, if they want it to be ten by ten versus two hundred by two hundred, then let it be marked out at ten by ten, so that, that can, that the boundaries.
One more time, can you please...
Yes. The Dedito Municipal Planning Council and the, and the Dedito Mayor shall coordinate with the Department of Land Management for the survey and, and marking of the park boundaries.
So the clerks, are you able to, to get that then? On the Panglinen amendment, Senator Spaldan, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I basically, in raising my hand earlier, had the same concerns as the previous speaker had, just in terms of there are no real descriptions of the boundaries of the park that we're allocating to the Veterans Park, the Dedito Veterans Memorial Park. And it causes a little bit of concern, because without the description, we really don't know where it ends, or it may be assumed that the whole strip is part of the park. Now, if that is the case, then what happens here is that, under this bill, the authorization that's granted is to erect, beautify, maintain monuments, restrooms, a pavilion for meeting and meditation, a fitness trail, a botanical garden, and parking stalls for community use. Now, the concern I had is, within that same strip, there is a skateboard park, again, for the youth, and it's widely used for the young people in Dedito. Now, if there were other avenues or venues that the Dedito Municipal Council wanted to create for its, its community members, whether the youth, whether it's a particular, whether it's basketball, say, for example, if they want to do a basketball court or tennis courts in that area, this legislation does not allow it to happen, because, again, if we assume that the way it's written right now, with no boundaries, that the whole strip is part of the park, then it is outside their purview, or anybody's purview, to be able to erect anything else, because it belongs now to the Municipal Council and the parks, the veterans' organization, to be able to use it only for the uses as described in this law. So I, I think it's, it's, and, and I know this is not speaking directly right now to the good senator's amendment, but here is, here's why I do speak to it. Even with the addition, the amendment that's being proffered by, by the amendment mover, that still doesn't designate a certain area. It basically gives the authorization for the Dedito Municipal Council to work with land management to figure out what that designation is. I'm not really sure that's the appropriate way to do it. I think what we need to do is really identify a size, you know, and then the Municipal Council can then work with land management, say, carve out, in this example, let's say it's four thousand square meters, which is one acre, carve out four thousand square meters just for this park. In that way, it's clear, because if we leave it to the Dedito Municipal Council at this point, yes, I'm sure that with sincere motives, they would like to dedicate the whole place to the Veterans Memorial Park. However, without looking forward, I mean, if we do look forward and look outside of that scope, then we might find out that within six months, or within two years, that really we probably would have, or the Dedito Municipal Council would have liked to have reserved some other space for other activities in which to erect other facilities. And so there is, again, some concern on my part, even with this amendment, that is not specific enough, because if we grant them broad powers, I think that the general, I would assume that the general consensus of the Municipal Planning Council in their interaction with the Department of Land Management would say, okay, let's go ahead and take the big strip and make it all, and if there's any, but if that is not the intent, and there's this disagreement within the Municipal Planning Council itself, then all of a sudden, this whole concept comes to a standstill. And so I'm not sure, just giving the broad sweep authority to work it out with land management is the proper way to do it. I think we might want to designate a certain, some certain amount of land for that, and I think before we even can do that, we have to understand what is the total size of that buffer strip, so that we can make that determination. And that's just a concern I have, Madam Speaker. I will not make any amendment at this time to the amendment, but it's a concern I think that people should think about, because it may be too broad, which actually may bring about some conflicts, even within the Municipal Planning Council itself, or between the Municipal Planning Council and land management. So I believe, Madam Speaker, we really need to think this one through a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Spaldan, and we're going to take a recess.
Well, that, that's why the amendment, I had no objections to the amendments, but she said that the mayor just showed, let me, let me call the mayor. The actual property is just block, block sixteen eight?
You have to... It doesn't exist. Did you cover the big one up there? Remember, there is a big wave, and you think it's a last letter? File with about one thousand, and you went ahead and got it going on the market.
No, this is the last bill.
No, we have to add another bill.
Melissa has got to come out and please, if she has anything to comment on, please, as I said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put this back in committee, though. I just said it was a possible, please. I'm watching. Tell me to come in. Yeah, because you only have one more bill left of this, right?
No, you have to add it. You want this? Just to say you know, you're here.
Say that again?
Karen, go there, friend. Give her... Yeah. You're not, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not. But that, I think that is, that is, that's...
Do you call, do you call it community center, community center mini, or do you call it community center? It's because it's a Dedito...
No, it's a park for Dedito veterans.
That's it, that's it.
The legislature is back in session, Senator Espejo.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, while they still get some clarification on Bill 362-30, I'd like to make a notice in the House rules motion that we dispense, we suspend discussion on this bill, and then we revert to our motions for the purposes of doing some housekeeping.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Now that we're in motions, I move that we place Bill 396 and a copy, the committee report has been filed, a commitment was made to put this on the agenda, and it's a bill sponsored by Senator Blas and Palacios, and it's act, it's an act making it illegal to possess HU 210, JWH 01A, JWH 073, and Salvia Divinorium, or Salvinorium A, also known as SPICE. So the committee report has been filed with the Rules Committee, and this motion at the time is to place this on the top of the second reading file.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the matter of the Bill 389, which is to reduce the drinking age as we know it, the vice speaker would like to offer an amendment to this bill, and very quickly, what we've discovered in other jurisdictions where the drinking age is twenty-one, those who are under the age of twenty-one that has a driver's license, they actually indicate on the driver's license, turning twenty-one on, and they put the, the person's, the person's birthday.
Okay, so the motion then is to please pull it out?
So the motion is to pull out this bill, Bill 389-30, from the voting file, and to put it on the second reading file for an amendment, that would do it sequentially.
Without any objections?
And I explain what that amendment is. I'm not moving the, I'm not moving the amendment at the time, but I'm explaining what the reason behind pulling this bill from the voting file back to the second reading. Which one? Because there, there's an interest in putting an amendment to the bill that will raise the drinking age, to indicate on driver's licenses, that if you're under the age of twenty-one, that there'll be a notation that, that turning twenty-one on, and they'll have the individual's birthday, and that's what they do in other areas. It's going to instruct Department of Revenue and Taxation to prepare, when they prepare these driver's licenses, that there'll be a notation on the driver's license, that if the individual is under the age twenty-one years old, then they would have to indicate on the driver's license, turning twenty-one on, and they'll have the birthday.
Do we need to...
So that if you go into a bar, or...
We need to maybe take a recess, so we, we're, we're gonna take a brief recess.
I know, but when you, when you're being carded, and they're standing there, you know, trying to calculate your twenty-one.
He said, he thinks there's public on your wall, radio, nothing. He said, he's just giving me, he said, there's something, he said, there's something in line, he's just looking for his special winner.
Birthday is necessary. It's not. There's direct instruction now, or it's all...
I'm sure, I'm sure the holder of the driver's license would argue, hey, hey, look, that's my birthday there, I don't, I don't know, you know, I'm just saying that. See, I don't want to jeopardize Bill, Bill 389. It's already set in the forty-five.
I mean, I'm just saying. I'm just saying, you know, because I didn't have a... No, but I don't think they need to do it to, I don't think they, I don't think the four hundred driver's license is set in statute, so they, well, they didn't, yeah, they decided that they don't have that fine, they're leaving it to the citizens.
Yeah, the director made the adjustment, so.
Madam Speaker, I would draw that motion, and we could figure it out later.
The legislature is back in session, Senator Espejo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and there've been two requests made of you to waive public hearing requirements. The first one is Bill 413, and they're making copies of that bill, and that's your bill, Madam Speaker, and I wrote you asking that you declare that bill an emergency, and I'd like to yield for you to, please to read the bill title and to dispose of the request to have such a declaration.
There is, there is a, a request for Bill 413. Okay.
I've, wait, oh, no, I request, I made the request to you.
Okay, I see.
No, you're, no, they're still under motions.
No. Tell them about what you decided.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, yes, we do have a, a letter requesting for an emergency declaration on the matter of Bill Number 413, it's an act to, well, it's relative to the construction of a new northern high school, and what this would do is that it would authorize the construction of a new northern high school to be located in Harmon, because under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two thousand nine, approximately twenty thousand dollars have been allocated to Guam to issue a tax credit bond called Qualifying School Construction Bond. The federal provisions of the tax credit bond requires that we issue this bond... that we issue this bond this fiscal year, or we lose the allocation. So to ensure that we are able to build this much-needed high school to ease the overcrowding at Simon Sanchez and GW, and especially to meet the extremely tight timeline for the issuance of the QSCB, I respectfully request an emergency declaration be made on this matter along with a subsequent waiver of the public hearing requirement. And I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we provide everybody with a copy of the bill, and let's take a recess? I will. Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's with deep regret that I withdraw my motion on the matter of your Bill 413. And the next motion I'd like to make is also...
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker, if I may. With due respect to our Majority Leader, I think there has to be a general understanding as to why that motion was rescinded. And that is to allow for a public hearing to be held so that we can get additional information in regards to the borrowing capacity of this government. So just because it's not stopped, it's just delayed perhaps for about a week. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So both of the bond bills will be heard then next Friday. That's advance notice already. The Northern High School and the reprogramming of a bill, a bipartisan bill. Thank you very much, Senator Ogden. I appreciate it.
And I'll make sure to enforce that, Madam Speaker. I want to commend you, though, for finding a way to get your bills publicly heard. First throwing out a waiver of the public hearing, then have the chairman immediately concede to holding your bill.
We just discovered a new strategy.
I think it was by design. So the next bill, which really needs to be addressed by this body, as we are told by our members, it's Bill 433. And the sponsor of this bill, this is relative to delaying implementation of the International Building Code. And the sponsor of the bill has written a letter to you requesting that, since this subject matter was previously heard in a prior public hearing, that he's respectfully requesting that you do waive that public hearing requirement.
Yes, and thank you. After, yes, evaluating it and coming to the conclusion that, yes, Bill 333 in its form, yes, has been heard, and therefore, this, I've certified that then 433 meets that condition as set forth in 2GCA.
And so I then move that Bill 433 be placed on the second reading file.
Okay, on that motion, then, without any objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My last motion is for Bill 424 to be placed on the session agenda. You've had a public hearing, and you did do a committee report. And this is relative to the reorganization of the Guam Education Policy Board. And this time, I move Bill 424 to be on the agenda.
On that motion, without any objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we proceed down to the second reading file.
Can you just give me the order again? Just to make sure.
Okay, the first order is Bill 396.
And then?
And then Bill 433.
433, and then 424.
And then we also have Bill 424. And then 362 is whenever Senator Tina has the information.
Thank you very much. So we are on then Bill Number 396. And the author is Senator Blas. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 396-30 COR into the third reading, and I'd like to opportunity to speak on it.
Please, I proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 396 is basically an act to make it illegal to possess certain compounds, certain chemicals, along with salvia divinorium and salvinorium A illegal to possess. This is as a result of, first off, a BOLO alert. It's basically a law enforcement alert that I was provided. And then information received from the community of a substance that was being sold and marketed as incense, but instead, unfortunately, not used for that purpose, but actually used for the purposes of getting high. And so hence the formation of this piece of legislation. Before I go on, Madam Speaker, and I've managed, I've already passed out the amendment, just so that there is no confusion and we recognize what this is for, is I have an amendment that would change the title of the legislation to read an act making it illegal to possess HU 210, JWH 018, and JWH 073, chemicals found in the product commonly known as spice. commonly known as spice, and salvia devenorum or savanorum A, to change the title on.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, again, you know, these, these are products that are, unfortunately now, can be sold, that is sold and found in several establishments that, that market incense, and the product, here more specifically, that, that's sold in our market is, is that product called spice that contains these chemicals, HU 210, JWH 018, and JWH 073, for the edification of, of my, my colleagues. These chemicals have been tested and have been found by the Drug Enforcement Administration to be chemicals that, if ingested, have potency levels that exceed THC levels, the tetrahydrocannabinol levels, or marijuana levels, two to three times the potency, and that have just as long a, a effect on the high. And the, the product is so new, though, that with regards to the, the short-term effects are the effects similar to that of the utilization of marijuana, but they have not been able to, to study the long-term effects because these is a relatively new chemical, new phenomenon. Salvia devenorum or savanorum A is actually a plant product, and is a plant product that is used in actually Indian rituals that provides an hallucinogenic effect. It makes people start to see things and give them, basically, feelings of grandeur. It has the same effect, too, as other hallucinogenic drugs. There are no medical, medicinal purposes for these products, and although, although these products, and most especially the product known as spice, is commonly substituted and is used in, in, in place of marijuana, because it doesn't have the same odor or scent as marijuana, and it's legal to purchase, but it has the effects, the effects are far more potent than marijuana, and no medicinal effects. Therefore, Madam Speaker, recognizing this, and seeing this is not only a great concern here on Guam, but basically throughout the world, many nations, not only the United States, but other nations, already there are many nations within Europe that have, that have prohibited the, the possession of these, of these products because of the effects that they're seeing, and because people are actually substituting, using it as a substitution to, to marijuana and to other hallucinogenic drugs. That said, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues for their support in being able to put this on our books so that it does become illegal to possess. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Senator Blosz. On the motion, does anyone would like to speak on it? Anybody want to question? No? So, on the motion, then, to place it on third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator Blosz. I recognize now Senator Ada on Bill 433.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 433-30 in the third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
You may continue.
Madam Speaker, we have been trying to, the government of Guam has been trying to implement the International Building Code, a shift from what is being used now, the Uniform Building Code of 1994, to try and shift and adopt a new standard, which is now being used throughout the nation, which is a replacement of the now obsolete Uniform Building Code. Now, just very recently here, in fact, today, is supposed to be the effective date for implementation of this new building code. And in my meeting yesterday with the Chief of the Guam Fire Department and the Director of Department of Public Works, they basically said, "We need more time. We need more time because the requirement that was mandated for the appeals board to review and to adopt the, the IBC and the references, reference codes in the respective sections of, that has to do with the, the International Fire Code and other six other codes, has not yet been done." And according to the law, that was Public Law 30-84, the appeals board was supposed to have reviewed these, the codes, and have, and was supposed to then have adopted the codes, made their recommendations to adopt the codes. That hasn't been done. In addition to that, quite frankly, it was just last month that we were able to get, the government was able to get a body to come in and provide training to the people who would be using the codes, the inspection section up at the Department of Public Works, the Guam Fire Department, and, and also the prospective builders in the community. And so, it was just several weeks ago that this training was made available, and as a result of that training and workshop, the level of awareness and the implications of the International Building Code really became a lot more apparent to these people who would be implementing the codes, who would be checking building plans, using the standards in the International Building Code. So, as a result of that workshop, the realization came that, you know, we still got some more homework to do, some more preliminaries that we really got to take care of. And finally, you know, as was the case months ago, when we, actually, when Public Law 30-84 was enacted, one of the reasons why that law was enacted, which postponed the original implementation date of the IBC, was because the resources were not made available to the agencies. The manuals were not readily available for procurement. In fact, as the meeting yesterday, the Guam Fire Department said that their procurement documents were still pending down at GSA to be able to get a copy of the, the additional number of copies that they needed of the International Fire Code. So, you know, all these, all these reasons put together has really thrown a monkey wrench in, in beating the implementation date. So, Bill 433 was introduced, and it proposes to do three things. One, recognizing that we are not ready, that the preliminary, the preliminaries have not yet been completed to enable a, an effective implementation. Bill 433 then proposes to postpone the implementation of the International Building Code and respective references out to October 1st, 2010. The second thing that Bill 433 does is that it takes away the, the, the responsibility for reviewing and adopting the, the code in whole or in part, and the respective references. It, it take, it gives that responsibility and tasking to the Director of the Department of Public Works, and with respect to the International Fire Code, it gives the responsibility for review and determination for adoption to the Chief of the Guam Fire Department. The third thing that Bill 433 does is that it, it requires the Director of the Department of Public Works and the Chief of the Guam Fire Department to jointly conduct a public forum to provide citizens of the community an opportunity to provide their recommendations and concerns related to the adoption of the IBC and the reference codes. Although, I, I really need to also point out that during the first public hearing, the first of two public hearings that were held last year regarding the adoption of the International Present at that public hearing, present at that public hearing was Mr. Mark Ruth, representing the American Institute of Architects, the Guam and Micronesia Chapter, Mr. Larry Perez, the Director of the Department of Public Works, Mr. Thomas Camacho, a Principal of Duennas, Bordalio, Camacho &amp; Associates, and President of the Guam Society of Professional Engineers, Mr. Husius Ninetti, the Building Permits and Inspection Administrator, Department of Public Works, Mr. Dean Gillum, a Registered Structural Engineer, Registered Civil Engineer, who has been practicing on Guam for the past four decades, Mr. Louis C. De Maria, Chairman of the Guam Contractors Association, Mr. Frank J. Campillo, Chairman of the Board, Guam Chamber of Commerce. They all came and testified at that hearing in March of 2009, and all of them provided support for the adoption of the International Building Code. So, I believe that representatives of organizations, significant organizations in the community were very much well aware. In fact, at that public hearing in March, they even indicated that discussions about the adoption of the International Building Code had even started back in the 29th Legislature with the Chairman at the time of the Committee on Public Works. So, you know, this has been an ongoing, long ongoing discussion, and it is not something that just came up, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and somebody tried to rush it through. So, there's been ample time for everybody to get comfortable with it. And it is these professionals that, at least, the Committee on Public Works was depending on with their testimony that they have, at least are, are familiar enough with the International Business Code and the fact that it is being used throughout the United States, and the fact that by adopting the International Business Codes, it will really bring Guam up to the most current standards for building. And Guam probably has the most experience in building because we have built and rebuilt and built and rebuilt, probably more than any other community in the United States because of typhoons and earthquakes. And so, it is the testimony from these people that really the Committee had to rely on, that the adoption of the International Business Building Code and the referenced sections, for example, the International Fire Code and whatnot, is really a prudent thing to do. Now, in the Bill 433, there is, you'll find in Section 3 there, on Page 2, there is the language, and unfortunately, in the bill, I, I did not underline the new language that was to be put in to amend an existing section of, of the existing law. And that was that the, the International Building Code in the Reference Section shall be adopted in whole or in part as deemed appropriate for Guam. So, obviously, many are aware of the recent controversy, the, all the discussions that has been raised in the media about, you know, adopting a code that requires how residential homes on Guam to have a fireplace and have automatic sprinkler systems and all that, and obviously, something like that would not be appropriate to Guam. And so, with the language that the adoption in part may be necessary. I do have an amendment that I will be proffering, and, and if I, maybe if I, maybe it'd be appropriate if I discuss it now, but basically, in that same section, on Section 3-
One, one moment. You were saying that on, on the line 13 or Section 9, that there's supposed to be an underscoring of-
No, no, no. On Page 2?
Yes.
Line 23.
23.
You will read there, "Updates to the IBC are hereby adopted in whole or in part as deemed appropriate for Guam."
Oh, those are supposed to be underscored?
So, no, the, "In whole or in part as deemed appropriate for Guam" should be, it should have been underscored, because that's new language to existing law.
So, "in whole or in part as deemed," and to the next page, "appropriate for Guam."
"appropriate for Guam."
Okay, does everyone have that?
So, and so, if, if we read further, "That adoption is subject to the review and determination by the Director of Public Works, specifically but not limited to the codes listed in Sections 101.4," and you read it on there, "and then subject to the review and determination by the Chief of the Guam Fire Department of the International Fire Code." But, in my earlier discussions with one of my colleagues, he looked at this, and he says, "My gosh, you're giving carte blanche authority to the Director of Department of Public Works and to the Chief of the Guam Fire Department. You give them carte blanche authority to look at this code and say, 'We'll adopt this, we won't adopt that, we'll adopt this in part, and we'll modify it.'" And so, I think it's appropriate that we're, that it's probably prudent to put additional language at the end of Section, on, at the end of Line 8 there on Page 3, language to the effect that the determination, first of all, the determination shall be made no later than 60 days after enactment of this act. So, they've got to get on the stick, they got to make their reviews, they got to make the determination what sections of the code are not going to be adopted. And then, so there's a timeline that is being placed on them, and then when they've decided and determined what codes are to be accepted or, or adopted in part, is that they would then transmit that determination to the legislature for information. And at that time, this body can take a look at it and say, "Whoa, no way are we gonna, that, that makes for bad policy," and then we can take appropriate action at that time, if it is needed. And then, the third thing is that additionally, the DPW Director and the GFD shall publish in a newspaper of general circulation their determination to adopt in whole or in part the IBC 2009 and the respective sections of 101.4 through 101.4.6. I have a copy of, of that amendment, Madam Speaker, so I could pass it around, and, and I guess I'm proffering the amendment at this time. So, if I could just have the page.
Okay, everyone has a copy? On the Ada amendment, Tom Ada's amendment. Senator Ogden, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As Speaker, I stand in support of the proposed amendment because it does take into consideration perhaps a concern that I had in regards to the original legislation, and that is, we have a code that is basically already adopted into law. What this provision can- What this provision contained in Bill 433 would provide is a 90-day transitionary period, of which, the Director of DPW, as well as the Chief of the Fire Department, would have an opportunity within that 90-day timeframe to be able to review the building codes and the portions that directly impact their ability to be able to evaluate and to approve projects henceforth. Then, that would be provided to the Legislature within 60 days. And I say, I think it's good, it's excellent, that in fact, that information is going to be provided to this body, so that we would know what changes are made. You know, the last couple of days, Madam Speaker, we're here entertaining legislation that did not go through the public hearing process, of which, two prior similar legislative measures already were entertained by this body, which covers the requirement for the public hearing. But in the same token, Madam Speaker, by virtue of having these agencies, who supposedly have the expertise, to be able to go in and review some of the provisions and highlight them, provide it to the legislative body, go out in a public forum, allow for the community to be able to comment on them, or to be able to make additional recommendations, I think it's always good policy to involve the community as it impacts future building codes and requirements. The only issue that I have with regards to the amendment, Madam Speaker, is something that the good sponsor of this legislation alluded to a little earlier, that carte blanche authority is being given to the Director and the Chief of the Fire Department. Without, at least the way I look at it, the, perhaps, 50% implementation of the administrative adjudication process, or at least being able to get the Chief Executive involved, because ultimately, he's going to have to sign off, or he is the, in this case, he and the Lieutenant Governor are basically the caretakers of this government as it applies to his directors. And I would like to perhaps make a suggestion to move in that direction, so that it's approved, reviewed by the appropriate agency and the Director, and then possibly concurred by the Chief Executive, so that it's a collective effort on the part of the executive branch, and then obviously, this amendment would provide for informational purposes that any of the proposed documents, or revisions, or extractions from the IBC 2009, that it'd be provided to this body for informational purposes. So, that's perhaps another portion that I would like to make a suggestion. I believe, I will leave it up to the sponsor of the legislation, only because, Madam Speaker, he has been working very diligently on this measure, or this building code, the implementation, the eventual implementation of this building code. And also, he has a better level of expertise as it applies to the engineering component and the building code that we are discussing today. But there are some provisions in here that I feel warrants reconsideration, and, you know, there's, there was an individual also on the radio this morning that continued to highlight one special feature within the IBC 2009, and that is, why would we require all buildings to have sprinkler systems installed? Because that would increase the actual cost of, of the construction of any new buildings. And, you know, that's a policy that we have to make, that's a policy decision, a recommendation that would have to originate, in this case, from DPW and the Fire Department, and I certainly look forward to their participation and their recommendations in terms of what they would like to extract from this code, and how they see it would apply towards ensuring not only that our buildings, or buildings and structures that are built henceforth meet these requirements, but they also ensure the safety of their occupants as well as the residents. So, I certainly look forward to those comments, and I stand in support of the proposed amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ogden. On the amendment... Senator Panglinen, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, you know, I rise in, in the spirit of trying to provide some greater clarity, maybe more for myself than others, on what this amendment means as it relates to what the existing code is, and coming back down to the Legislature. You know, I hear what happened, and again, you know, public notices were sent out, et cetera. I mean, I remember the original discussion, I was here in both legislatures. And, you know, I don't want to say, "Fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me," you know, but you ain't going to get a third time. So, my concern is, all right, I'm not an expert, but I know how to read, and I can read where it says, you know, that you should have an fire, automatic fire sprinkler system throughout your house. And had I read the code, which I also say I didn't read, I would have said, "Hey, that kind of doesn't make sense." Or, when it says that your fireplace should be graded and screened for flying embers, and I say, "Hey, that kind of doesn't make sense." So, this idea that now we're just gonna, I'm gonna once again leave, you know, the work that I really should be doing also to the, in other people's hands once again, so that, once again, they don't perform what they're supposed to do, they don't, and then, you know, I get to be called an idiot for the third time. And I, okay, call me an idiot now, because I didn't read the original one, but I kind of want to see, and I kind of want to have approval to say, "All right, this makes sense, that doesn't make sense." And so, what I'm trying to get at is, rather than sending this back down to the Legislature for information, and we don't read it again, or we read it and we want to change it, and we have to introduce a new bill, why don't we just make sure that we all do the work? And rather than sending it down for information, it has to be sent down for ratification, if there's such a thing, you know? So that we put an onus on these guys to do the job they're supposed to do, to provide us with the expert recommendations, and then we make the decision based upon the expert recommendations, whether to adopt it or not, or to modify it. So, in other words, I don't want to, once again, put my reputation, I guess, back into the hands of people who may not have either the capacity or the desire to do the work right in the beginning, and therefore, all it does is, it comes to me, and it moves forward, and then I get another person saying, "You know what, they missed this," or "They didn't miss that." Because when they send it down to us for approval, again, then we have to have a public hearing, we have to, again, bring in these experts, and maybe we can do a better job of reaching out to who is most concerned about this. And I, it's not that we didn't do a good job in this last ones, you know, it's like, we relied on these experts. I relied on the engineer, and the architect, and the inspector, and everybody that came and said, "Adopt it in whole, don't worry about it." And look what happened. Do we see any of them saying, "Oops, you know, I guess we should have told the Senators?" You know, I don't see the architect saying, "You know, we, we looked at that, and it's okay." Those Senators aren't really stupid. They're just stupid because they depended on somebody that they weren't supposed to depend on, you know? But, so that, to me, is what I want. I don't see these experts defending, you know, this body while we're being attacked for allowing a code to go into place that included fireplace. Maybe the architect looked at it and said, "We really should have this thing, just in case somebody wanted to build a fireplace, we should have a place in the code for that one guy who's going to build a fireplace in his house and put a 20,000-ton air conditioner, and then burn some logs so that he can feel he's in Montana." You know? And if that guy wants to do it, rather than yelling at us for, "How am I going to do this now that there's nothing in the code?" We'll say, "It's in the code. If you're not building a fireplace, it doesn't apply to you." Again, you know, maybe I'm a little being facetious, but it really is, you know, what they say, you've got to have some thick skin in, in, in politics, and I have pretty thick skin, you know? And in addition to skin, I've got some other stuff underneath the skin, so it takes a lot to rile me, I think, with regards to being called names and so forth. Doesn't really bother me. But what bothers me is that, you know, I'm supposed to do something, I put it in somebody else's hands, and, and, and I'm still responsible. And this, again, lays that responsibility on somebody else without having it come back to me for the final check and the final ratification. So, I would say that rather than transmit it to, to the Legislature for information, I say you transmit it to the Legislature for ratification instead of information, and then we can debate what that means. But that would be my amendment to the amendment on this, on this matter.
On, on the amendment to the amendment, Senator Panglinen's amendment is, on line 14, is to replace information to ratification. Any, no objections?
No objections.
No objections, so ordered. So, on the Ada Amendment that has been amended, are there anyone else who would like to speak on it? Senator Ada, would you like to close on the amendment then? Senator Faiti, would you like to speak on the amendment as amended? Okay, so, we want to, so...
There's no make-attention.
No, not yet then. I've got you listed. So, Senator Ada, then to close on your amendment as amended.
Fine. Madam Speaker, thank you very much, and I appreciate the input that was given by, by the preceding, by the speakers that stood up to support, and I also, well, since there's been no objections, I guess this bill, this amendment has been accepted then, correct?
Well, not yet. I'm giving you the opportunity to close on it then.
Okay, well, I, I...
Okay, so you want me to call for it then?
Go ahead, call for it.
Okay, so...
Guthers has some amendments.
No, she does, but this is on Ada's amendment, hers is separately. Okay, so, on the Ada Amendment that has been amended, there being no objections, so ordered. Okay, so now we've completed that, and a new speaker, and a new amendment, Senator Guthers, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I want to say I'm extremely disappointed with Appeals Board. They had, had over a year to straighten this out, and they haven't done it. I have four amendments. I think the first one will be complementary to the amendment that we just discussed. And if I may, Madam Speaker, I'd like to say that this, this whole matter's created a lot of confusion in the community, and not just with certain vocal people, but many, many individuals in the community have been calling my office, and I'm sure my colleagues here have received many calls as well, including families trying to build their homes and others who are quite confused by, by this initiative that we're trying to clarify. At any rate, my first amendment would make it very clear that until, until any new building codes have been properly developed, that the current code that was adopted via the UBC 94 standard shall be applicable in the territory of Guam. That has to be made very clear. So, I need the help of legal counsel here, because we just considered and sent down the third reading, we just considered the amendment of Senator Ada, which is a good amendment, but I would like to incorporate the language that the current building code of Guam, as adopted via the UBC 94 standard, shall be applicable in the territory of Guam until any changes are properly adopted and endorsed by this Legislature. That would be in, would be part of Section 2. Again, that the current building code of Guam, as adopted via the UBC 94 standard, shall be applicable in the territory of Guam until the Legislature approves any new changes to that code.
On, on the amendment, Guthers' amendment, I recognize Senator Ada, and then Senator
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I thank the lady from Angilo for the amendment that she has proffered. However, I, I really don't, I'm not, I don't think that this amendment really is necessary for this reason. The, the current building code that's being used is the Uniform Building Code 1994. That remains in effect, actually, at least another 90 days beyond the effective implementation date of the International Building Code. So, Bill 433 proposes that the new implementation date, effective date of the International Building Code will be October 1, 2010. 90 days beyond that date, the Uniform Building Code of 1994 will continue to be honored as well as the International Building Code. So, during that three-month period, there would be this dual standard that can, that can be utilized, and that will be honored. And the reason for that is that, for example, there may be building designs that are currently in progress, and let's say that it probably won't be finished until October 2. Well, if we were not going to have that transition period, then of course, they're going to have to go back to the drawing table and redo those designs using the International Building Code. But the engineering professionals in the field foresaw that, and that's why they provided that building, that dual, that transition period. Now, if we are not able to get our act together and come up and adopt a workable building code, such as the IBC, by October 1, and even out three months beyond that, October, November, December, October, November, December, January of 2011, then, then we, we really got really serious problems, probably much more than just, you know, adopting a code. If we are not able to get our act together, if our Department of Public Works, and if the Guam Fire Department is not able to get it together, so that we can review and adopt in whole or in part the appropriate building codes under the International Building Code. This is something that has been discussed since last year, during the course of this year, and for the next six months. And so, I think that we've got to put feet to the fire and say, "Get the job done, and let's get to it." So, I, I, I would, I offer that as an explanation for the mover of the amendment to consider if maybe we still need this amendment or not.
Senator Ogden, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, I look at, at this amendment, and with all due respect to the mover of the amendment, it reads, "Upon approval of the new building code of Guam by Lieutenant Guahan, this act shall be effective upon approval of the new building code, and to such approval by the Legislature, only the current building code of Guam, as adopted via the UBC 94 standard, shall be applicable in the territory of Guam." The only concern I have, Madam Speaker, is that the IBC 2009 is already adopted. That's why we're discussing this particular issue. And the way the language reads, it says, "Until such time that it's approved," when in fact, we are here today because of some of the concerns that have been expressed by representatives in the community. So, I, so that is the issue that I wanted to bring to the attention of the body, Madam Speaker, because understandably, we need to, at least, the way I see it, hold the reins of the IBC 2009, and allow for the intent of Bill Number 433 to carry through and, and ensure that DPW representatives and their experts, and however else they... and however else they want to reach out to the community in terms of getting guidance and suggestions and recommendations as well as the Guam Fire Department, that they go back to the drawing board. We've gone through this process for a year now, Madam Speaker. I remember distinctly back in June of last year, where representatives from these agencies requested the consideration to postpone the implementation until today or until June thirtieth. That was either a year ago and it was extended only to accommodate the government agencies so that they can properly go out to the community, provide the notification, share the information as to what the new code requirements are going to be and restrictions, and then begin to enforce them. That was a year ago, Madam Speaker. And that was even prior to the previous legislature, which had adopted legislation recognizing that the IBC two zero zero nine was going to be adopted as of June of last year. So we're a year and a half from the initial date when legislation was sponsored and passed by this body that would have allowed the agencies and the so-called experts to be able to review these provisions. And then, at the midnight hour, we hear comments, and rightfully so, from representatives in the community questioning the impact and the additional costs that would be imposed on the new building codes that take effect today, July first, two thousand and ten. You know, Madam Speaker, I share the frustration that a previous speaker had also shared with us earlier only because we've gone through this entire process for a year and a half. And it's unfortunate that we had to have individual representatives outside of our government agencies from this community step forward and express some of these concerns which are illegitimate, all legitimate concerns, at least the ones I've heard so far. And you know, the sponsor of this bill, Madam Speaker, had mentioned that there were also private sector representatives that understood the impact, the implications of some of these provisions and also understood that we needed to update our codes so that we can ensure the safety of these buildings for all of its occupants. And it goes back again to perhaps why we're even discussing this. And that's why, Madam Speaker, I, in addition to sharing my sense of frustration, I asked the, the mover of the amendment to perhaps, I know there's a, there's a sense of objection, but to perhaps delay the effective date, if that is what her intent is, rather than stating the amendment the way it is. Because my understanding is that as of today, IBC two zero zero nine, International Building Code two zero zero nine, is in effect by virtue of the law that was passed previously by this body sometime last year. So I think that the amendment, I do not oppose the amendment, I support the intent, but the way the, the amendment, the proposed amendment is, is written, I do have some serious concerns as to whether it really would accomplish what the, the mover of the amendment would like to see. So I wanted to share that perspective. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On, on the amendment, is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none, Senator Guthers on your amendment, if you want to close.
Yes, well, let me say this. If my colleagues will look at amendments two and three, they clarify and further clarify the first amendment. The first amendment is connected to amendment two and three. So I think that will address the concern of the recently speaking colleague. But ladies and gentlemen, just to close on this amendment, the problem we have is people are confused. For whatever reason, good, bad, or ugly, this whole thing has not been done properly from the administrative side. It was mentioned that today is the Effectivity Day of the International Building Code. How can it be an Effectivity Day when the entities responsible for implementing aren't prepared to do so? They're not prepared to do so. We have a responsibility therefore to change the Effectivity Date and straighten this out. And that's what the four amendments that I'm offering attempt to do. Starting with the first amendment that simply makes it very clear until all, until all of the required changes are made that make sense, the code that we have been using on Guam, the building code of Guam is adopted via the UBC ninety-four, shall be applicable to the territory of Guam. But that is connected to amendments two and three. So I ask you to please look at amendments two and three as you consider the first amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Would the members need to go on a recess, Senator?
Just as a point of information.
Yes, you may state your point of information.
In the amendment that I had, that, the first amendment that I had proffered, well, actually in, in Bill four three three itself, in section three of Bill four three three, that's on, starts on page two, one of the new phrase that was, that was, that's being, that's being used to amend the existing law is that the pursuant to the adoption of the IBC two thousand and nine, associated codes referenced in the IBC two thousand and nine and subsequent updates to the IBC two thousand and nine are hereby adopted in whole or in part as deemed appropriate for Guam. I think that is saying pretty much the same thing as what amendment two is basically saying, that, that, you know, that the director of the Department of Public Works and adds in the additional detail in coordination with appeals, shall review the IBC two thousand and nine and delineate only those provisions in the code applicable and necessary in the territory of Guam. I think that phrase is pretty much the same as when we say to adopt in whole, in whole or in part as deemed appropriate for Guam. So I believe that amendment two, that, 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 that the mover is proposing is pretty much already covered in Bill four three three.
Senators, I'm going to take a brief recess.
Yeah, the reason why we took out appeals is appeals is saying, you know, the, the purpose is, is, really the purpose in life as a body is to make sure that our engineers are licensed and they're qualified, to make sure that our engineers, that, and, yeah, and that, and that they're, and that's why they had, they, they didn't take on that responsibility. It was mandated for them to review and determine the appropriateness of the reference codes. That's what we, but that, but that's what we're doing. We're, we're moving, we're giving this ninety-day period beginning and we're saying, within forty-five days, conduct a public forum. Within sixty days, review and identify what is going to be no, not a dot. And then send that down here and it's going to be ratified according to his amendment that he made. I will take a look at that. Well, I, I did, I did not, I did not make ninety days. Well, I, I have, if the departments are saying, yes, this, this next ninety days, what we need, we'll get it over the hump.
No, four two three now, it's different. Are you focused on four two three? In four twenty, we had a provision that he criminalizes the, the one ounce or less. And it took him, I told the person who I left the care box, don't put it in because that's a bad way of visualizing it, right? He left it in. It took him to screen that bill. And then he admitted, I read it, I did align that provision, but they went ahead and they, so it took him to tell the person. You know, I don't think we're going to get to your bill decision.
Guys, that would be nice.
With the next hundred and eighty days, that UBC will still be on, still be down. And we're saying, we're, I, I think we're moving in that direction already. Why we got to say, well, this is our, our deadline. Well, I don't know who else that we can trust.
Do you know they want to try and do nothing?
But you know what I'm afraid of? Is that we take this administration off the hook. If that's the case, then let's make it out to the first, to the beginning of the second quarter of next, next year. That's when the new administration comes in. The important thing we got to do today is to lift that effective date, which is today. So that's when, then establish a need. And if, if the body feels comfortable with, you know, but again, I guess, I can't see going into the next, right? And their belly is just, we have a new administrator.
And you drink alcohol, it can, your tolerance level is much higher.
Oh, they, they don't have the, they, they need to order more books before you meet with the inspectors and all. But they have, they have the inspections of the one stop.
The engineering firms have the rest for all.
You know why Guam Fire Department doesn't have that? Because the paperwork, the paperwork is sitting down at GSA waiting to be processed. But when that's ready. But it's a system. I mean, if you, if you don't have the, you know, the level of confidence in them and you feel like to go. Then if we lower the expectations, if we lower our expectations, that's what we're going to get. As soon as, you know what they're going to do, as soon as we push it up they're going to put everything off.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Guthers on, on your amendment, your first amendment. Ready to call for the vote then? Since there was an objection from, okay, it just, it says, there is an objection then, so I'm going to call for the votes of all those in favor of Senator Guthers' amendment. Please raise your hand. The amendment fails. Senator Guthers then on, you still have, okay, so makes the two, three, four. On the, on the main motion, I, I don't see Senator Taitiwe, her name is on the list. Is there anybody else then who would like to speak on the main motion? And the bill, there being none, Senator ADA then to a motion to place down or you want like to close?
I'd like to close, Madam Speaker. I want to thank my colleagues who have taken the time to review Bill four three three. And I believe that supporting this bill will give us and give actually the implementing agencies, in particular the Department of Public Works, the Guam Fire Department, the additional time that they need to be able to really do a closer review of the codes and determine what is to be adopted in whole or in part. It also provides the additional time to, to accomplish some of the preliminary logistics that are necessary, such as getting the manuals in so that each and every inspector will have a copy. Although the one-stop inspection office does have a copy, have a couple of copies that are available that can be used as a reference manual. So I think giving this additional time and the additional requirements regarding sending the, their, their determinations down to the legislature for ratification, conducting an additional public, a public forum within the first forty-five days after enactment would, would, would serve the best interests of, of everyone in the community. So I would ask my colleagues to please support the passage of Bill four three three. Thank you very much.
On the motion then to place Bill four thirty-three as amended on the floor to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. On the agenda, I have Bill number four twenty-four, Senator B.J. Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill four two four dash thirty to the second reading file for, and I'd like an opportunity to speak on the bill.
You may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank you for having the hearing the other day on this bill. And I want to address a couple of things, though I didn't speak at the hearing about it. One, I want to make it clear that this was not an impetuous act. I probably shouldn't be admitting this publicly, but in nineteen ninety-four, I came into this legislative hall, not into the hall itself, but into one of the offices to express my opinion to a couple of the senators about the idea of having an elected school board. I tried to remind them that in my study of civics, there are only three branches of government. And what you were creating in an elected school board was a third branch of government. A third branch of government that wasn't and didn't have, I mean, a fourth branch of government. A fourth branch of government that didn't have its own power of raising money. A fourth branch of government that was beholden to a budget department, a A fourth branch of government that was beholden to a budget department, uh, BBMR and, and budget allocations. And it was going to make for an impossible situation. I tried to explain to the senator at that time, who became governor the following year, I mean, the following, uh, January, that it was going to create havoc in the administration of, of government. Um, unfortunately, my predictions in nineteen ninety-four were correct. And over the last sixteen years, we have seen the problems that, that have resulted from, um, having a, um, a separate board and outside of, and outside of the control of the governor. And, um, in the interest of trying to restore some sanity to the education system and trying to re- restore some kind of, um, order, I think it's imperative that the administration and the governance of the, um, Guam Public School System. Yeah, I guess we change it to DOE now, GDOE, Guam Department of Education, be returned to whoever is going to be the governor in the next term. And, um, I think it's imperative because it's, it's, it's impossible to try to figure out how we're going to, whoever is the governor, to determine how you run government and how you split up the meager resources that the government has in trying to make payroll for this fourth branch or payroll for the, the, the executive branch of the government. I mean, you, as Speaker and, uh, the Chairman of the Committee on Rules knows that even here in the legislature, there have been days where, uh, the, um, payroll checks have been withheld for a couple of hours or a couple of days because we needed to get the, um, allocation from the administration. And, um, it just, and the fact that the depart, that the legislature is only seven million dollars, that makes it a little tolerable to, to handle. But when you have a department where the needs are in the hundreds of millions, it really does become an impediment for the effective operation of government. It makes it impossible for the Department of Education itself to function, to know that there are certain things that it can and it will be able to do in the next month or in the, in, in the upcoming year if it doesn't have control, um, of raising its own money and knowing exactly how much it's going to have on a, on a monthly basis. And, um, we've also seen over the last sixteen years that the, um, interest in becoming members of the Board of Education has not, has not been there. And, but before I go any further, Madam Chair, I want to say that the per people that have served on the, this elected Board of Education over the last sixteen years, I think all of us on Guam owe them a debt of gratitude. There hasn't been a group that I have seen dedicate as many hours to meeting and trying to address what it is that they need to address um, at the, uh, as the Education Policy Board. But unfortunately, the realities of, of, of government are such that it's an impossible situation that they're, that they're in. I finally decided there was time to introduce this bill, though I had been, uh, toying with it for, since I first came in here. I finally decided to introduce it last week, or several weeks ago, when, after six months of asking for a report on what the, um, Board of Education and the, uh, Guam Department of Education was going to do about the Evergreen, uh, study. I, after three letters over six months, I still hadn't gotten a, a response back. And then we have, have, you've been having to sit very, um, conscientiously overseeing their budget and going through item by item. And the thing was, was that I understand that there are things that we've, uh, ordered by the fourteen points of, um, adequate education. But we also have to know whether or not any of the recommendations in the Evergreen Study, uh, rec, made any recommendations to, to try to be a little more efficient, um, in the use of, of these meager government funds. And, um, it wasn't included in this budget, the, the study came out last year. I was hoping that it was going to be, um, some of it was going to be implemented in this, in this budget cycle, in the budget that was sent to us. I was disappointed, if not dismayed, to find that it hadn't been included in this, in this budget. And, um, I think that now that, uh, we're coming up on a need, another election of the Education Policy Board, that, that rather than go through another one where there are not going to be sufficient number of, um, members signing up, where there are vacancies because there aren't sufficient numbers who were even written in, or even those written in didn't have sufficient numbers, uh, a number of votes, um, I really think that the time has come for us to re- recognize that this was a noble experiment that hasn't proven itself over the last sixteen years and that it's time at this point to put an end to it. And, um, what I've proposed in, in Bill four twenty-four is to emulate what we have at the University of Guam and at GCC. Both of them have nominating committees, uh, of, a, a, that nominate to the governor individuals to serve as regents or trustees of the individual institutions. Uh, we've seen that, uh, those nominations, that, that the nominating committees have taken their responsibility very, very conscientiously, in, even to the point where, um, taking on the governor about the fact that, uh, their recommendation is not being, uh, looked at. Um, and the, those, both of those boards, the Board of Regents and the Board of Trustees at GCC, have proven to be excellent management boards, understanding their responsibility. And both, um, both institu, educational institutions have shown that this type of governance is the best governance for an educational institution. And I think it should be the one that, uh, we implement for the Department of Education, for the good of all of our children. So I thank everyone for, um, thank you for having the hearing, thank you for reporting it out. And I also hope that my colleagues, or a sufficient number of you, will support us in, in getting Bill four twenty-four passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, by Speaker Cruz on the, uh, the motion to recognize Senator Palacios.
Thank, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill, uh, four twenty-four dash thirty, uh, which proposes to reorganize the Guam Education Poli, Policy Board and make it, uh, effective. I too, Madam Speaker, felt that the appointed board of the past was not working and thought that an elected board would be better. Sadly, Madam Speaker, the elected board just never worked since its, since its inception. And I would say, based on my knowledge today, that the appointed, the, uh, appointed board concept is, is a better concept. The viability of an elected board was first question, when in its first election, there was not even enough candidates to run for some of these districts. I remember when there were only one or two, and there were three seats actually up for, uh, nomination. At one point, Madam Speaker, I really joked with some s- degree of seriousness to my wife that maybe you should run because maybe by technical default, by technicality, you, you would win with just one vote or two vote because nobody else is running. And that is how, how, how bad is the, the, the concept, I think, and this, it, it just, it just didn't go right at the very beginning. And so, that, that is, even, even that, there was not enough interest. I understand that there was a time when a member of the board was elected with just fifty votes. I mean, I cannot believe that that can be actually a mandate of the majority of the people of Guam to have members there serving and dictate the direction of our education systems. The elected board concept has shown its inability, Madam Speaker, to address problems with the schools. The JFK issue, the placement of those students, they have to, in some fashion, contribute to the resolution of that problem. The threat of withholding of federal funding because of financial mismanagement. Now, the only thing that would surprise me with the educate, with the, uh, Education Board or the pu- public school system is that if that is not a problem anymore, then probably that'd be a surprising, uh, thing for me. Because this has always been an annual routine. The never-ending shortage of teacher every school year. I mean, I cannot, I cannot understand why they cannot plan ahead. They know that this has been a history ten, fifteen years ago, every year, every year. And I would venture to say that again, they know that three years or four years from now, it will still be a problem. Why, why can't they plan for this and anticipate this? And if they're not able to retain teachers, then go, go to the DOD and find out what they're doing that they're able to keep their teachers. So there's been a problem, the facility maintenance problems. And every time, Madam Speaker, that problem got out of hand, we convene an emergency session and then address the problem because the board is just not able to handle that. In my, in my, in my time of service here, going on six years, about three or four times that, that we had to meet in emergency because we had to appropriate supplemental funding, because there will be no meals for the students or the summer school, or the, the boss will not be able to, to pick up the, the, the school because there's no fuel for the, uh, and every other problem. Now, the good thing about the appointed board, Madam Speaker, is that the board members are generally appointed for their credentials, experience, and interests. And the legislature conducts further review of each candidate's fitness to serve in the board. I have seen this with other board, with the Board of Regents, with the Board of Trustees for UOG. And, and that's how it should be, in my opinion. So DOE should know, should, should be no difference. Now, the arguments about, the argument against an appointed board i- is, is political interference. This argument, Madam Speaker, cannot anymore hold water. We all have seen the political interference with, with the elected board is actually worse. There had, there is external political interference. And what is worse is that it's, it's, it's combined with internal politicking. And so, really, I mean, I, I have no faith in the elected board concept. So I say, Madam Speaker, that the elected board concept is a bank rob idea and must be replaced by, by an appointed board, where the governor and this legislature jointly will select the members of the board. And that I support. And I, I rise in support of Bill four two four, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion. Senator Panglin and, and then Senator Ogun. Oh, I am so sorry.
I can wait till everybody's finished.
No, you're, you're next.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
The younger man will yield to you.
You know, Madam Speaker, uh, I guess when you asked me, um, how do I feel about getting rid of the elected board? I s- impetuously said eighty percent. And then I went back and I thought about why I supported an elected school board in the first place. And it's basically, what do I want? Do I want politics in education that is for the sake of educational politics? Or do I want politics in education for the sake of gubernatorial politics? Because when you put the control of the largest department of this government's agency with the biggest budget, gubernatorial politics takes all sorts of coats and colors and, and motivations. And I would rather, and I want, discussion and the politics to be on what's best for the children and not what is best for my gubernatorial career and my gubernatorial reelection. And believe me, if we think that the last sixteen years, that the fight over to remove this elected school board and the fight has been remove these guys by the governors. Why? Because they're injecting, they wanna inject gubernatorial politics rather than educational politics into the education of our children. We had a governor who took thirty million dollars and paraded toilet paper around outer loop because he's in charge of the federal funds and that's what he wants to buy, toilet paper. We had truckloads of toilet paper. Because he and the Director of Education controlled the federal funds. Now we're saying, why this school board is responsible for the mismanagement of the federal funds? Come on! It's when you had the gubernatorial politics in there and you had this one person responsible for federal funds in cahoots with the governor, that resulted in the beginning of this, federal funds are being mismanaged. You forget, did you guys forget? I guess, I must be an elephant or something, a Republican being an elephant, because I remember. I remember what it was like. When we had the governors trying to grab the politics of education to support the politics of gubernatorial politics. We minus, if we don't like who's there, and maybe that's why I said I'm eighty percent, because I'm telling you, I don't agree with a lot of stuff this, the members of this board are doing. But that doesn't mean I don't agree that they shouldn't be elected. And I said, God, I can't believe it, you know? And I sit every once in a while in their board meetings and I wanna say, kid, jeez, can't you just do thi- do it this way? Because this is the way I wanna do it, this is the way I see it. I'm trying to bring, break you out of that logjam, but you know what? They're arguing there, what they're hearing from parents as what's not happening in the schools, what they read in the law and they're being presented as what needs to be there to meet the mandates of education by this government. That's what they're arguing about. They're not arguing about who to hire and what to hire. And you know what? You put this in the back, back in the hands of the governor, that's the argument you're gonna get. The governor wants this guy to be put in that position, and you board members, I want him there. And if you don't, I'm gonna put my own director in there, who's going to do what I say and buy a truckload of toilet paper instead. That's why we went away from that. That's why we put in a, a, a system that will take out gubernatorial politics and legislative politics out of the Department of Education and put it in the hands of those elected by the people. If we don't like the people's decision, then let's try to figure out a better way to do it. It's like saying, you know, if I don't like this governor, I wanna go back and have the Navy appoint the governor because I don't like what he's doing. Does that mean I wanna get rid of the elected governor act? Because I don't agree with this governor or the previous one? That we shouldn't then take that away and say, you know what? Let's, let's put it back in the Navy, because when the Navy was there, they were concerned. Is that where we wanna go with democracy? Democracy is not nice, tidy, it's messy. Democracy is a messy system of government. Do you know what? As Winston Churchill said, it's better than any other form of government we've ever tried before. Not enough teachers, get rid of the board? I say, not enough teachers, get rid of the UOG Board of Regents. That college is supposed to be training teachers, and if they're not turning out enough teachers for DOE, get rid of the UOG Board of Regents. Is that the standard here that we're gonna have? That if there's not enough teachers at DOE, get rid of the DOE board? Why, why? They're not the ones that are supposed to be training the teachers and educating the teachers and graduating the teachers. There's, there's not a line of extra teachers at the Department of Education waiting to be hired. And they're saying, I don't wanna hire you, I don't wanna hire you, I don't wanna hire, I don't wanna hire you. And the kids are left with a school aide in the classroom. And we have five thousand teachers applied and none of them's getting hired. If that's the problem, all right, get rid of the board. Let the people know that there's five thousand teachers certified lining up to be hired and the board won't hire them. That's the problem? It's like saying if there's not enough nurses at GMH or Public Health, get rid of the UOG, uh, School of Nursing Dean. Because she's not graduating enough nurses. Is that, we're gonna hold these guys accountable that there's not enough nurses at GMH? I never heard anybody said, hey, get rid of the president of UOG because he, he knows we have a shortage of nurses on Guam and he's not training nurses. Or get rid of the board, the president of UOG, because we have a shortage of teachers and he's not graduating teachers. And this holy grail of, let's do it the way we do UOG. You know why it's working? Because UOG is under a receiver. That Board of Regents is under a receiver. It's under a district court judge that every time we try to. It's under a district court judge that every time we try to do something that's not in the best interest of U O G, those guys, the board, the Regents, they come here and they say, you do that, we're gonna pull accreditation with our accreditation board. What? Because it's gonna threaten our accredit, and we back off or we do something different. We go find another problem to solve where one doesn't exist. That's why U O G works. How many times in here do we have bills to change U O G or do something at U O G and they come down here and they say accreditation and we back off? We can't inject the politics in there because of that. Now, do we have that at, at D O E? No, we're gonna just, politics, the whole kit and kaboodle. I, I think that's correct, kit and kaboodle? Just gonna throw it all in there. You know, again, Madam Speaker, I didn't think I was this fervent in my support, but I see what's happening. I know what's being said. And I don't like the direction. And I want to be, just remind us of where we came from and let, you know, we're saying, this bo- this body, the board used to have purview over federal funds at U, at, and expenditure and accounting for it with this board. But because one of our members right there decided that he and the director of the U S D O E guy had a good relationship, and so they said, you know what? I don't want to deal with the board. I just want to deal with one person. So take the board out of D O E of, of federal funds. And so what, what did we do? We passed a law here, right here. And we told that board, you have nothing to do with federal funds. And then all of a sudden, there's no accounting for it. And they took it away from them, they tried to put them on a third, they're putting them on a third party reason. And we tell the board, hey, how come you're not watching federal funds and how it's being, look what happened, they took it away. They put a third party receiver. But it was this body that passed a law that said, board, stay out. You, stay out. They don't even report to you on the expenditures of federal funds. And now that we got a third party receiver because it hasn't been accounted for and the programs haven't been managed correctly, we say, what did you guys do? How did you let that happen? How could you let that happen? You guys are incompetent? It's not fair, Madam Speaker. This board is not perfect, nor were the other boards are. Remember, remember the gubernatorial, we had governors taking the Board of Education to court for like three years in battle on an elected board that we all thought was doing a good job. And we sure liked it when they were challenged, when the governor sued them and they challenged the governor and they established their authority. Why? Because we didn't like that governor. Or we didn't agree with him. Because we feared what he would do if he got his hands on two hundred million dollars. And then we're gonna have what? Not enough teachers and too many cafeteria workers maybe. Is that what we were afraid of? I think so, I think I heard that kind of argument in here. And so we encouraged the board, defend yourself, defend your authority. You're elected. And they did and they won. And now we're saying, see, look at all that politics. We can't have that kind of politics. We just gotta put, take them out of the picture and just have the governor do whatever he wants with it. That's where we came from, Madam Speaker. Now, if we think we need better guidance and governance, we, the, when we had a school board that we liked what they were doing and we liked the checks and balance between that and the administration, and we had some great people on that board, not that we don't have on this one, but we had educators on that board. Why? Because they had the power, they had the authority to make decisions that affect positive changes in the operation so that the Department of Education. We had Ione Wolf, Dr. Ione Wolf. We had Gloria Nelson on that board. We had Mr. Ben Manuel. And you know what? When there wasn't enough teachers in, in the classrooms, this, that board could go into the, to the director and say, look, you are not gonna spend money on this, we're gonna move it and put it here so that you hire more teachers. They had the authority to do that. You know? And so what happened? We got more teachers in the classrooms. And we thought that was great. But then what happened? Again, because we didn't like some of the politics, this body passed a law that said, hey, because even though that was working, once again, because we had a chairman of that board and a member of this body who didn't see eye to eye when they were both on the board and one said, there, we're going to take away now their power and we're gonna cut it, we're gonna limit it. Where you had oversight over policy and implementation, now you're only gonna have oversight over policy. But if it doesn't get implemented, you're the one at fault. What? You wonder why we don't get better candidates or more interested candidates or better qualified candidates in our own eyes? Not in the eyes of the general public, because in the eyes of the general public, all of these people are qualified, they received a vote, they should be sitting there. But in our eyes, the type of candidates we want. You know why? Because we said you can't do anything other than set policy. And if it's not followed, if you say, I want a certified teacher in every classroom and the Director of Education or the superintendent decides that she's gonna spend the money on books instead, rather than teacher, and that happens, we go there and we tell them, what happened? Fourteen points say, teacher, you decide to go book. And we say, where's the teacher? You're, you're at fault. But the guy's going, but we told her teacher. But you should have made sure, teacher instead of book, what happened? You got booked. Well, we can't interfere in operations. That's why this board has devolved in its power. That's why we're getting people that said, is it worth it? Is it worth it for me to go to a meeting once, twice, three times a month, understanding and knowing what needs to be done, kind of being able to see what needs to be done and saying, look, can't you just take this and put it there? And that'll solve that problem? And we tell them, you can't interfere in that matter. But it's so simple. You can't interfere, it's operations. Why would I waste my time to go to every meeting, bang my head against the wall and say, you know what? We really need to fix that leaky bathroom. You know, because the kids just, it spills over and the kids walk into that. Why can't you get a custodian in there to fix that bathroom? Operations, uh, uh, uh. So you want me to come back two, three, four times a week, see that leaky bathroom and its operations? And I can't demand of that superintendent? Or even tell the custodian, hey, get in there and mop that thing up? No, operations, interference. That's how we have, you know, in tomorrow, we've neutered the board and yet we still hold them responsible for everything that goes on. I'm, again, I want to say that I, I am as frustrated with the problems we're facing with education and the operation of the schools because I have my own ideas on how I think things can move along. But you know what? When I listen, for the last sixteen years on this board, there used to be a time I attended every single Board of Education meeting, almost four, five years. And I'd be there at six thirty after a full day of work here. And I'd be there until ten thirty, eleven thirty at night with these board members, poring over what's happening in the schools, listening to parents, talking to the cafeteria managers, talking to the superintendent. And things were better then when this board could do those, when the board had the authority and the power to do those kind of things. And I still have sat in later board meetings under a different board as I saw the power kept getting whittling away. And I saw, I can see the frustration, I can see the angst, I can see the, man, is this worth it? I can see less and less people being interested in sitting on that board because some of them have seen what has occurred. Because some of them were there attending the meetings before they were board members as parents, as interested members of our community. So once again, Madam Speaker, you know, I, I'm not saying that this appointed board can't work. But I tell you, for me, going back to where politics other than educational politics is what drives the management and the philosophy of the Department of Education is paramount to switching that and flipping it back and letting gubernatorial politics drive the management and the philosophy of the Department of Education, in my opinion, is a step backwards. Not that it can't work, but boy, what are we gonna do? When the governor, the next governor, whoever he may be, decides that, you know what? I have too many campaign supporters I promised jobs to, there's not enough money in the line agencies, where, hmm, where do you think I can put them? That's what we saw happen. Hmm, it's two hundred and sixty million over there or a hundred and fifty? Hmm. I wonder where. I don't want to go back to those days. I want to continue to work with the board and the structure and the mechanism in place there. And, you know, put in the time and the frustration needed to do, to make it work and make it better. Believe me, we're gonna have just the same frustrations, whether it's a governor running the place or not. But the frustrations are gonna be a whole lot different than, I wonder if my child had a good day at school today and everybody there was thinking of nothing but how his education is going. And that was their only concern. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sidus Moss.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglin and Senator Rispicio on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. Not so much for the, you know, listening to the previous speaker and I, not so much I'm not going to dispute a lot of the things that he said because in many respects, he's absolutely right. But what I'm going to say is that I've, I'm not, I've never once faulted any board member, whether current or past board member, or any superintendent, whether current or past superintendent of the Guam Public School System, for not really effectuating real change and delivering a quality education to our island community and our students who deserve this kind of education. Madam Speaker, my concerns over the last seven and a half years are for the very reasons that the previous speaker articulated. In that, Madam Speaker, is we have a system that, that fundamentally is flawed. And I agree with Governor Camacho when he says that this has been a failed experiment. We have a system, Madam Speaker, that, that we have under the guise of the elected policy board or elected Guam Education Policy Board. What that really means, Madam Speaker, is that because they're just limited to policy, they're powerless. You know, and, and my, my concerns and frustrations with the state of education now over the years is really because of what that Public Law twenty-six, twenty-six dash twenty-six has done to create this kind of adversary relationship. And just look at what's happened with our current elected board and how their role has been limited to just policy. And regardless of who that superintendent is, whether it's Dr. Underwood now or whether it's her predecessor, even Mr. Juan Flores, every time the board would try to express something wrong in education, that superintendent, through no fault of their own, would be advised by the, by the Attorney General's legal counsel, who's representing the Department of Education, and advise that superintendent that those concerns brought up by the board are just operations and not policy, so they don't have the authority to do that. You know, you yourself as Chair of Education has, have been expressing these very same things. Why do we purport to have these people elected and then say, Madam Speaker, they're the people's elected representative when they have no authority to do anything within that school system? You know, in listening to the previous speaker say that the relationship between U S Region Nine with the, with the U S Department of Education and the Department of Education locally, that relationship was severed under an elected board, not under an appointed board. You recall when we lost the funding for, for, for the Guam Public School System, the funding that we get for educating military, the children military dependents? That funding was lost under an elected board system, Madam Speaker, not in an appointed board. When Mr. Juan Flores was, was fired, then U S E P A, U S D O E was upset and they, they demanded that the board stay out of federal funds and administration of those funds. You know, and this previous legislature was very quick to pass a, a law to do just that and those things were also articulated. But you know, Madam Speaker, someone has to be accountable for the state of our education as it is right now. Now we have a perfect system, if you're a member of the legislature, because if there's anything wrong with education, all you have to say is, well, those members are elected, they're elected by the people. If there's a problem in a certain school, Southern High School was closed, go check the elected board members. Unfortunately, Madam Speaker, they've been getting a bad rap over the years because they're powerless. The superintendent is in a position to say, well, we have elected board. Senators are in a position to say, well, we have elected board. We've heard the current governor say, well, we have elected board. Why do they keep coming to me as Governor of Guam every time they fall short of cash? You know, in a, in an ideal government situation in a utopia, we would have a Board of Education, a system of education where they would have the ability to raise their own revenue. And whatever revenue they raise, Madam Speaker, they would be responsible for spending those revenues dollar per dollar. Because they'll know that whatever they commit to by way of an appropriation, just like the legislature does, they know that if that's cash coming in, that's, that's cash that they will get. But the current system of how we budget, the governor recommends to this legislature a flat amount to take care of the University of Guam, Guam Community College, Department of Education, I think the libraries, he lumps everything under the education component of his budget act or his proposal. And then it's up to the legislature to go and decide, you know, how much more money is needed for these various entities. But even at that, the governor's lump sum budget for, for all education components hovers around two hundred million dollars, their current budget request is, hovers around two hundred seventy million. There's already a seventy million disparity, but who's going to be the one to reconcile that other than the Committee on Appropriations in this legislative body? Even before that budget request was submitted to us, those disparities should have already been reconciled. But it's convenient to say, if you're from the executive branch, oh, their elected board, let them develop their own budget. It's convenient to say, if you're from the legislative branch, this perspective, oh, the governor underfunded the Guam Public, the Guam Department of Education. What I'm getting at, Madam Speaker, is we have a system right now and to argue that these are the people's elected representatives where you have more vacancies than they are actual, where there, there's some positions that the people are, within that particular region have not ran for that education. So on the day of the election, you have write-ins. We have a situation where people are elected to the Board of Education because of a write-in, last minute write-in campaign. So, and, and if I were a member of the public and I really understand why it, there's very little interest to run for a board where you have no power to do anything. It's a system that's not working and someone needs to be held accountable. And I think what you've done together And I think what you've done together with the sponsor and your committee on education, it's actually a segue, because you're not, you're not, this bill will not terminate any existing elected board member. They would have, they would have the opportunity to serve out their term until the end of January, or the end of December, so this is effective January two thousand and eleven. And so, what we're doing also in advance is, is addressing a situation where we won't have individuals express interest to run for the Board of Education, file their declaration of candidacy to the Guam Election Commission, and then just have the legislature address it then. There's more than enough time to do this now, so that anyone with that desire will know exactly that come January two thousand and eleven, should this bill pass and become law, that position is no longer available. The Guam Election Commission will be given ample time, so that ballots will not be printed with these names, and then that law will be subsequently repealed down the road. And so, there's a lot of planning on the legislature's part and the sponsor's part to want to do this in anticipation of these kinds of events that will occur later on. But my support for this bill, Madam Speaker, is really quite simple and it's very clear. You know, either the Board of Education, either they have the authority to do what they need to do to effectuate real change within the Guam Public School System, or that authority be vested in the governor. You know, and if you look at the first idea of giving the board full power and control over education, we've heard our colleagues argue over the years, because we've tried to go down that road. But we heard our colleagues argue over the years that if you have members of the Board of Education who have equal or more authority than the superintendent, how can you really have one concerted effort to get anything done within DOE? So that's been a concern that was raised and addressed over the years. And so, because we know that this has been a failed experiment, as Governor Camacho pointed out, this bill, four-two-four, would really just decide once and for all who is going to be ultimately responsible for educating our island children and where the buckshit really stop. And when you're dealing with a, a situation right now in the government of Guam, where the cash resources are very strapped, where there are limited resources to go around, someone has to have that, be in a position to be responsible, and that person really should be the governor of Guam, Madam Speaker. For all practical purposes, that should be the governor of Guam. He should be the one to determine what the budget ceiling level should be for the Guam education system. He should be the one to determine what the cash release and requirements are for DOE, so you don't have a, a fourth branch of government, or individuals purporting to be and act like a fourth branch of government. And it's been chaotic. I would be the first to admit that, that, that what we've seen with education is chaotic, not because of any one individual, any board member or the superintendent, but really because of the system and how fatally flawed it's been, and how it's created a, an atmosphere and environment to be adversarial, because of how it's structured. And so, I rise in support of this bill. I, it's definitely timely, and it sends a message that someone, if everybody's in charge of something, then no one's in charge and nothing gets done. But this bill provides that kind of clarity, and hopefully, some kind of clarity that we can move forward and address our Guam Public School System. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rispicio. The chair recognizes Senator Uggan.
Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, when this bill was, with all due respect to the sponsor, when this bill was initially introduced, I had some serious reservations. You know, I'd like to turn the clock back seven and a half years ago, when I had three children who were still attending our public school system. At that time, the decision came up that, let's take this entire system and transition into an elected board process, so that in fact, we can empower our people to elect the members of the board, and let them run our educational system. You know, Mr. Speaker, despite all the challenges that were taking place internally within the system, there was one fundamental principle that I stood by at that point in time. And that is giving our people the opportunity to be able to elect the individuals who are gonna sit in the board, whether it be by district or by island-wide process, and let them decide, because they're closer to the system itself. And because of that, that principle, I stood there and I made that decision, and I endorsed at that time the process of going with an elected board. Many years later, after things have transitioned through this body in terms of some of the comments that were shared previously by previous speakers, about how the board has been segregated towards just being a policy board and not a governing board, that that in and of itself, I've heard from a number of board members, and perhaps in this case, it may be a biased presentation of perspective, but because they were passed legally and established specifically to be policymakers on that board, that they were restricted from venturing into operational issues. And they were restricted from imposing some restrictions or requirements on the superintendent of education. I look at the testimony that was received that evening, Mr. Speaker, despite having a, that evening a very challenging schedule. I took a look, I intentionally made it to the public hearing, just to hear some of the comments from individuals who were gonna provide testimony. And of course, in this particular case, we had several representatives of the board that stepped in and opposed the restructuring proposed in this particular legislation. What I found keenly interested was, some statements were made about that hearing, that there were some challenges getting people to run for an elected board. You know, many years back, in the previous legislature, I had introduced a measure to increase the stipend for the board members to a thousand dollars. Incidentally, that legislation never made it through. But when that idea was proffered publicly, there were seventeen, and I literally counted, seventeen individuals who had expressed interest in seeking a seat in the board. But because of the lapse in time and that legislation not making it anywhere, it only materialized where I believe only seven individuals had officially filed to run for the elected Board of Education at that time. And that suggestion came from one of the board members, and I supported that suggestion because it would create an interest and an incentive. And I don't think that these board members serve on the board by virtue of the interest in the monetary compensation. But obviously, there always has to be, to some extent, some incentive created. So I looked at that and I said, okay, if that's gonna be the case, and apparently, the decision of some of our colleagues at that time was, the thousand dollars is better spent elsewhere, within the school system. Well, you know, Mr. Speaker, we have another process that's in place, it's called the CCU, that I don't think has had too much difficulty getting individuals to run for that board. And I need to qualify my statement, because perhaps it's not. We have two members in this AGA's body who have served at the opportunity to serve in that capacity, and I don't think they ran to serve because of the monetary compensation, but because of the public service component. But I'm sure that the monetary compensation did not hurt in assisting them, or contributing towards the decision of some of the sitting members who had sought a position on that CCU. But one thing I found very interesting, Mr. Speaker, is the testimony by the superintendent of the department herself, itself. She testified in opposition of the measure. And she said that although many have said the elected Guam Education Policy Board is a failed experiment, and that the organization is flawed, she believes that it may be because the law may be flawed. The law, the board has been prohibited by law from discussing federal programs, and thus failing to have the ability to hold the superintendent, incidentally, this comment was coming directly from the incumbent superintendent, thus failing to have the ability to hold the superintendent accountable in the areas of federal programs. I bring that up because, Mr. Speaker, having had all four of my wife's children, obviously, I didn't give birth to her, but I was a contributing factor to that entire process. But having all four of my wife's children attend our public schools, of which one decided to graduate from one of our public school, high schools, and the remaining three had ventured off into, after the eighth grade, into a different setting. I've had the opportunity to look at both systems, and to experience both systems in terms of the governance. And it's interesting, because at one point in time, the Board of Education was a governing board, had that authority to require the superintendent of education, or at that time, the director of education, to carry out certain responsibilities. I know some comments have been made about the financial component, and you know, I'm still a believer, Mr. Speaker, that there's only three branches of government. There is not a fourth called the Department of Education. There's only three branches of government. And in this case, co-equal branches of government. And one facilitates and manages the resources as it goes to the Department of Education. But you know, I look at, looked at and observed all of the board members that attended the public hearing last night, I mean, the other night, and based on the record of their attendance, they had all, everyone that attended that public hearing, had all been very actively involved in the board activities and their meetings. That's why I find myself in a slight quandary, because I ask myself, is the system broke where we have to take it away from our people, given that opportunity to select their board representatives? And if it is, what's the rationale? Federal programs is one, that was used as an example, that they did not do anything to protect the federal programs or the federal funds. Well, I think that it comes back again to the responsibility dictated by law, that you are a policy board and not a governing board. Another statement that was made, and it was mentioned and highlighted in the committee report, was that apparently, the two higher educational institutions, our university and our college, and this was mentioned a little earlier, apparently is running an excellent system. And I have to concur with one of the previous speakers who said, that term accreditation, accreditation watch, has always been a statement that is forwarded to this body any time that a proposal is put forward, or even introduced, that would directly impact the operations of these institutions. And they have to do that, because obviously, our intent is to ensure that we provide them the resources, and that their boards, as well as their administrators and presidents, carry out their, their task to retain and to maintain accreditation. But it comes back again, Mr. Speaker, to representative government. That's why I find myself in a quandary. I'm asking myself, where is the system broke? And if it, if it's broke, is there sufficient information in this report that tells me that in fact, it is? And I'm sure by tomorrow morning, that I'll receive a couple of comments, if not more than a few, that yes, perhaps there's justification that in fact, the system is broke. But I've seen individuals serving, over the course of the last six or seven years, on the elected policy board, who have given every ounce of effort in terms of trying to support the educational system. And taking the level of governance, or being able to select their leadership, taking that honor and privilege that was extended by the law to our people, really leaves me with a lot of thinking to do between now and the time we actually act on this measure, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, it's an easy fix, in my case, and in the case of several others who are pursuing a different office, because obviously, this would provide the chief executive and the upcoming administration the opportunity to select. And I've seen it work well. From an individual that I work closely with, I've seen it work well, where in fact, government resources within the executive branch are immediately mobilized, so that they can provide the school system with the support that they need, in many instances in the past. So it can work, and in some instances, it has worked. But then fundamentally, again, it goes back to governance, selecting leaders, and whether in fact, our people's decision will be one that we give to them, that we honor despite the selection criteria, and that we work perhaps in fixing the system in a different fashion. And I'm sure that there's more than enough suggestions or recommendations about taking a look at the system. Perhaps the Department of Education, which now educates in excess of thirty-one thousand students, now runs in excess of, I believe, forty-one or forty-two public schools, perhaps it's the system that we need to look at internally, so that in fact, we can provide refinements to the entire process and get resources to where they need to get, to go. And that is into the classroom, into where our students are actually educated within the school environment. And perhaps it's a systemic challenge. So whether we transfer it over to the executive branch, once again, for appointment and confirmation requirement by this body, or we retain the system where it is today, I think that because of the size and the magnitude of the requirements and the impact that this has on our students, our public school system, and most importantly, all of the individuals that work in our public schools, that perhaps there may be a different role that we, will have to be taken or undertaken in the years to come, to make sure that at the end of the day, that every single student being educated out of, out of our public educational system can stand proud, and we can be assured, and the community can be assured, that they receive the best quality education here on our island. And I close with this statement, Mr. Speaker. Having attended some of the high school graduation ceremonies, and having listened intently to some of the statements being rendered by the valedictorian, and in some instances, the salutatorian, I stand here extremely proud for those that I was able to attend, that I was able to listen to. I stand here extremely proud, knowing that they receive good, quality education, and perhaps a lot of it is because of the incentive or the initiatives that they took, or they undertook. But I, I'm sure that a lot of it also can be directly attributed to the education provided in the classrooms, with the teachers, as well as the school environment. So I close with that, knowing full well that our public schools continue, to this very day, to provide good education with room for improvement, but good education for many of the students that come out of that school system. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Speaker Wampatcha recognized. Did anybody else wish to be recognized after the speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to just make one correction, if I may, because someone had mentioned about the, the board members who are currently serving, and that the term does not really end for all of them in December of this year, because on page two, where it says the term of office for board members, is that the members who are serving this staggered term, who, who came in to serve longer, the four years, that these will be those same individuals, which will be approximately four of them, and then the, the others who would expire in this year, those are the terms then that will be filled. It also says that in the event of a vacancy, or resignation, death, or other cause, the governor shall appoint another member, with the advice and consent of the legislature, for the full term, or for the remainder of the unexpired term. And this is the key. When, and that's on page three, lines two to five... When, and that's on page three, lines two to five, is that when there is a change of administration of the government of Guam, after a gubernatorial election, no courtesy resignation shall be requested by the new administration nor offered by any member of the board. And these are the ones with the longer staggered time that went into effect in the last election. And you are correct, Mr. Speaker, when you stated early on in your opening statement that this was actually patterned after the selection process of the Board of Regents. And that was a problem for, you know, the longest time. And I remembered when I had introduced that piece of legislation, I'll never forget, former Speaker Tony M. Pinkel, when we're even going through that process, is that, and we were also talking about the Department of Education, that he's always felt that the buck stops, you know, with one person, and that's the governor in the executive branch, and that to, and by delegating that responsibility to somebody else, then we cannot expect then the governor in that case then to come in and continue to rescue the Department of Education. And at first, when I heard him, you know, say that, I didn't, wasn't able to grasp the full concept until, you know, much later and as the years went by, having seen an elected board with full governance, governance, and actually even working under an appointed board. And it wasn't until about, I would say, on the inception and the implementation of Public Law 26, that's 26, was when I truly understand exactly what he meant, because what had happened then, and maybe it's not the fault of a legislation per se, it may not even be the fault of the administration and the leadership of the Guam public school system, what had happened was that I guess the, later on, as more legislation were being introduced and removing some responsibilities or purview of the board over a certain, like for example, the funding source, that then it kind of somehow sent a message, I think, to the board and the Department of Education, thinking that they are a fourth branch. And past members have actually made some other changes by law to remove even the Department of Education totally from even being a member of the cabinet, remove them again from the process in which they would normally have to go to BBMR to work with them on their budget, so that then they will not be this as we're currently facing and have been seeing that there is that gap now of eighty-some million that we're going to need now to try to bring closer to what this government can actually afford. So I, you know, I was seeing that, and it got to the point that, and I've been actually told by other directors, is that they have no responsibility and answerable to anybody, but then to their board, and not even having to work with BBMR. And that was what I was able to experience at the time. So as the years, you know, went by and serving in the legislature, that there were several things that, yes, several of our members had highlighted what actually took place. I can only speak for myself in terms of my involvement at the time, when I know that, you know, the board had won, yes, their cases against the governor at that time in the 23rd Guam Legislature and the 24th. And then finally, yes, on the 26th Guam Legislature, the Public Law 26, 26 was passed, making it an elected school board, but then making it strictly policy. And at that time, the legislature went at great length to really look at the definition of policy and what are the different responsibilities and duties of the board member that are truly policies. And at that time, I had also introduced legislation wanting to protect the superintendent, well, the director at that time, so that there won't be this threat of being fired, because it is going to be the board who would hire the superintendent, that I've introduced even legislation to consider the possibility then of an elected superintendent, that even though you would have a board there, whether they're policy or governance, but when you have an elected superintendent, then, you know, there won't be that threat then, that if the superintendent moves forward to implement and even expand, you know, monies, that there won't be that threat of being fired by a board if they, if he or she did not adhere to the demands of the board. And, but as you know, that has actually never happened. Mr. Speaker, I do not have a crystal ball, and I cannot predict who the leadership will be in the next election. And like I said, is that I can only speak from my personal experiences of being with, of having served under an appointed board, and having worked also with an elected governing board before I came into the legislature. And there are real big differences, and I have to say is that although we don't have all the answers, I do know, and I still feel, no matter what it is, is that somehow the buck has got to stop with the leadership, either the leadership in the Department of Education or the leadership in the executive branch. Mr. Speaker, I don't know if you recall, but I remember that, you know, here in the legislature, when we want, when we had this governing board, the elected governing board, the legislature had actually wanted to move towards that direction of trying to make him really almost independent, I guess, and even to that extent, almost being the fourth branch is that, because the only way in which they could do that, if they're going to be totally separate, is that they must have some authority to be able to raise its own monies. And they being unable to do that, the legislature then decided to authorize by law, is that no matter what happens, eighty-eight percent of the grocery receipt tax must be, must actually go to the Department of Education. And so with that authority, it made them feel, of course, that, you know, my gosh, and then of course we can do whatever we want. But within that same fiscal year, three months later, they came right back again saying, well, you know what, that eighty-eight percent of what we were receiving for GRTs is just not enough, we need an additional supplemental budget of ten more million. And we were never able to, to be able to get a handle of this and to control this. And this all happened basically in, you know, since the inception of having to have an elected school board. In the past, when I remember, when I was in the system, I never used to hear these arguments with the appointed board, that they were able to work very closely with the legislature and with the governor's office. Their budget, of course, is determined by the administration, and everybody, everybody in the government, in all the different departments and agencies, all the educational institutions, the legislature, and judiciary, all lived with the budget that they had. And, but somehow that, you know, didn't happen. And, you know, I keep wondering also, you know, what would really be the best thing? And granted, we all don't have the answer. And sometimes, you know, I've looked at Saipan, when I took a trip there, when we had a training of the board members, and asked, how is it that it worked over there very well with their board, and that they really stuck to policies, and it wasn't a problem, they were able to work that, and yet somehow we weren't able to be able to see that happen here? So, and it just boils down, you know, I guess, to personalities and what we want, and maybe in our frustrations after so many years, somehow, you know how it is, is that you've locked up, you know, you know, an animal, let's say, for many years, and finally when you let it go, then it started just running, you know, rampant, you know, because it's free and can do whatever it wants, and, you know, whether that is, you know, a factor, I don't know. But I'm sure that everybody in this legislature wants to try to do the best, but I believe that we cannot legislate based on personalities. We all know, yes, and unfortunate, fortunately, you know, next year is going to, I mean, this year's an election year, and next year there'll be a new governor, whoever that would be, I don't know. I'm just hoping that they do not, he or she, or the team, there's she, there's no she. That's the bad, there's no she, because then it would have been much better. But anyway, that they truly would not use the Department of Education as, the department to go where there are, yes, a lot of jobs, and I understand that, because, you know, we saw that. I was a school principal at the time when I was interviewing for a school eight position. And normally what the department would do is that the top five, based on their ranks, that they would then call them for the interview. And I would select an individual, my first choice, you know, and then I was submitted and says, oh, no, you can't do that, you got to do a first, second, and third choice. And I said, well, I don't want anybody else but this one person, only to find out that I didn't get, you know, naturally, yes, the person that I wanted, because what I heard later on was that a call came in from the governor's office saying that this is the person who they want to be selected. And legally, they're saying that that can be done, because the individual made the list, the list of the five, but it wasn't the individual that, you know, I selected. And I'll tell you as well, in my own other experience, is that under an elected board, is that, yes, I've actually received phone calls where I was told that I must reinstate a student that I had suspended, and by refusing to do so, that I was nearing subordination. You know, I get phone calls like that. I've got visits at the time when I was a school principal, and I was told also what I should do in my school. I remember one time is that, you know, some, many times, the kids come in early, very early, the buses bring them in, I would be there one hour before, but even at that, it wasn't early enough, because then, like I said, some buses come in early. So a board member came down and said, you know, where is the principal? Was there just before I arrived and started then to give instructions to, you know, to everybody in the school, even though the assistants were there? So, I mean, they're just, you know, there's no right or wrong answers, I would think, Mr. Speaker, in terms of, you know, how this can all work. So it really boils down to the leadership. And whoever, you know, the leadership is, I beg that they do not abuse their authority, their power, because then if, you know, we, if the schools fail, then you'll be definitely at the backs of that leader who has caused it to fail. You always get what you've always done, of course, if I can get that statement right, if you continue to do the same kind of thing, and if you can continue to put people maybe who truly are not qualified individuals, just because you need to be able to pay back all of your support, then I think ultimately you're going to end up hurting, you know, our children in the long run. So, Mr. Speaker, having, of course, like I said earlier, gone through all these years of serving under both an appointed and an elected school board, saw what they did, and ultimately, yes, as a, when I say principal of the school, I'm totally responsible for what happened at that time in my school, therefore the buck stops with me as the leader of that school, the success or failure of my school, and at the same time, the buck's got to stop also with one leader. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I've sat here to try to understand all the perspectives that have been offered by all our colleagues who have spoken today. This is very difficult for me, and I'm still not sure how to vote on this bill. There are very good points made in favor of supporting this bill, there were some good points made to not support this bill. Everything, you know, in support of, you know, the buck's got to stop someplace, so it should be with the governor, or, but then again, the other argument was, well, there is a democratic process, and, you know, that allows for perhaps the mitigation of abuse of power by a sole authority over a department with the, the largest department with the largest budget. I still don't know, and I'm going to go home, and I may come back tomorrow, and I still won't know. However, the question comes to mind is, in this particular bill, this basically says, okay, what we should do is get away from the elected school board and have the governor appoint all the members of the board. And then I look at the duties of the Guam Education Board, as enumerated here, and if I may read it, let's see, "Control and direction of all funds and appropriate to the, shall have general supervision over the Department of Education and the control and direction of all funds of and appropriated to the department, subject to such restrictions as may be prescribed by law. The board shall submit an annual budget to the legislature. The board shall have the authority to delegate such of its powers as it may deem appropriate." I guess when you start looking at, and that's basically it, that's the duties of the board. The question that came to my mind was like, well, why do we need a board then? I mean, if this is the road we're going to go down, and we're saying that somebody has to be accounted, accountable to, for education, to the state of education, they have to make sure that the budget is prepared and the expenditure, the funds that are appropriated to the Department of Education has got, the buck's got to stop someplace, then what's the purpose of a board? And I don't know the answer for that at this juncture. In other words, if we're going to go down this road to basically turn over, change the way we run education from an elected board to a governor-appointed board, then what do we need the board for? Because the governor's going to have to be accountable for it anyway. I don't know. The other thought I thought, you know, that came to mind was that, well, okay, we've also read in the paper that perhaps is there a middle ground? Is this a black and white, is this a yes or a no type of a question, where this is the right way and that's the wrong way, or vice versa? Or is there a compromise, as has been proposed in various other forums, where perhaps there should be a partial appointment by the government, by the governor, I should say, and a partially-elected board? Is that a solution? I don't know. I really honestly don't know. And again, I was hoping that through all the discussion and all the input and perspectives that were going to, that were being discussed today, that I would come closer to a resolution in what would be the best approach, and what is the most logical way. But this is not an easy problem to solve. It really isn't, because we have seen the failures of both ways, in which there was first of all, no board, actually, three ways, there was no board, and then there was a appointed board, and then there was an elected board. And in all situations, there always were some problems and difficulties in terms of getting our education system up to the par that we all expect, not just as legislative, but when I say we, we as a community, to get our standards up to the point where our kids are interested, where our kids are actually being educated to that level that we're meeting national standards in our testing, and also are very competitive with students from everywhere else in the United States, and perhaps the whole world. The question still remains, how do we get it there? Because we're still kind of at the bottom of that rung, bottom of that ladder. Does this legislation move us forward in that direction? I don't know. I really don't. I really don't know. I'll have to go home tonight, think about it, pray about it, dream about it. Hopefully, by the time I wake up tomorrow, after I eat breakfast, I'll figure it out. But that won't happen, I'm sure, because there's just too many difficult issues that are involved here, and it's not just a simple black and white, yes or no, this is better than, this method is better than that method, or that method is better than this method. And I guess, during the whole process, is that if, and this is just my thinking, if we needed to think about this whole issue a little bit more, then maybe we need to have, to be at status quo, as opposed to changing the law right now, and we're not really sure, one way or the other. I mean, we really haven't looked at all the factors and all the facets. We do have good input from some people who came to testify at the public hearing, but again, I think there's still a lot more thought that needs to go into this. And so in my mind, it's like, well, how do I address this problem then? And when it comes to vote tomorrow, what am I gonna vote? And if I needed to buy a little more time, in terms of looking forward to perhaps other solutions, other compromises, other hybrids, in terms of an approach to our educational system, then I would have to vote against this measure, and I would have to vote for the status quo, until such time that we have a better understanding and perhaps a more resolute approach, in terms of our confidence, of how we can help our educational system out. But is that a wise thing to do? Again, that presents a whole different dilemma. We are here, this bill is before us, there are many people who speak in favor of it, saying that ultimately, somebody has to be held accountable. But then again, when we talk down that line, it bears the question, then what do we need a board for? Because if you want accountability, then you might as well just give the governor the right to hire the superintendent. And there it is. If the superintendent fails, that means the governor fails. Or if the superintendent fails to fulfill her duties, his or her duties, then the governor has ultimate power. Instead of going to a nine-member board saying, remove her, he can just go down and call her up and say, hey, your job is done. You're not cutting it. And all these words that I'm talking about right now are just thoughts that are flowing through my head, and again, will continue to flow through my head until hopefully I reach some kind of resolution when I wake up tomorrow morning. But I wanted to throw that out, those thoughts, to share with everybody else, that I'm not sure, that I don't believe, I should say, that this is a right or wrong approach. Is it absolutely necessary that we do this today, or at least this week, by tomorrow, vote on this and change the whole complexity of the education system, all with a swipe, or all with a yay or nay vote? I'm not sure about that. And when I wake up tomorrow morning, and I'm still not sure, because I feel that perhaps a lot more discussion needs to go on, a lot more input has to be made, then I would have to be forced to vote for the status quo. And that means that I would have to vote no on this bill. Not so much that I don't support it, but in that we need a little more time, a little more information, a little more discussion, not only amongst ourselves, but amongst, amongst others out there in the community, before we make a decision to change the way we're addressing education now. And there is no doubt that there are a lot of things that need to change, because we have not gotten to that standard, where we can fully say that we are satisfied, this no longer needs to be meddled with, our children are doing great, we're achieving this, and we're achieving that, and our schools are in the best condition. But, that being said, like I said, tomorrow, when I wake up, I hope I have something in my mind that will address this. But if not, as I mentioned earlier, then I would have to vote for the status quo. And that would mean to say that I would have to vote against this measure, until such time that we actually have more information, more ideas, and a better discussion, in terms of how to approach our education system. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Espaldón. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none. Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think just, unless there's any objection, move it down to voting file.
On the motion then to send 424 down to the third reading file, without any objections, order. We're back to Bill 362, and I understand, okay, Senator Barnes, okay, Senator Panglinen, you have an amendment?
I'd like to withdraw my other amendment and replace it with, and I think I made that as a verbal amendment that I was reading, and I'd like to replace it with the amendment that's been written out and passed out.
Okay, so the amendment that's being withdrawn is where you have the Dedito Municipal Planning Council, and the Dedito mayor shall coordinate with Department of Land Management. Okay, that's so. On that motion then, without any objections?
I'll follow.
Yes, he's withdrawing it. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amendment then that I would like to propose has been passed out. It's a handwritten amendment, and it would, it's to replace the existing Section Three with the following, and then renumber the existing, existing Section Three as Section Four. The severability clause basically becomes Section Four. It would read, Section Three would be park boundaries. And it would read that the mayor of Dedito and the Municipal Planning Council shall determine the size and location of the park within Lot 16A, as delineated within the attached map, identified as Department of Land Management, drawing number E455T343, presentation number 34224. That's the designations at the Department of Land Management for the map. And then the Department of, and so what would happen is that the mayor, the Dedito buffer strip is quite large, and so the mayor and municipal planning council would determine the size and where they want that, within that 16A, as designated in the map. And then the Department of Land Management shall survey and map the boundaries as determined by the mayor and the municipal planning council, so that then we'll know where the park is located within the larger lot. And then therefore, the remaining lots may be available for other uses that are not dedicated to the park itself by the, and then determined by the municipal planning council and the mayor. So, that is my amendment, Madam Speaker, and I'll make sure that the clerk has a copy of the map as reference in this amendment.
On the amendment, Senator Espaldón?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My only problem, Madam Speaker, well, not my only problem, but one of the problems I have in my head right now, looking at the legislation, it says the South Diego-Dedito buffer strip, a strip of land extending partially across Block 16A of the municipality of Dedito, da-da-da-da-da-da. So in other words, as I'm to understand, this area, this area in which the Dedito Veterans Memorial Park will be situated, will be on a strip of land extending partially across 16A. However, in this amendment, it has that the municipal planning council of Dedito shall determine the size and location of park within Lot 16A. So I just wanna make a clarify, I mean, I just wanna make clear in my mind that since the strip extends only partially across 16A, the park itself will be in that partial lot, that partial section of the lot of the whole strip?
That's, that's correct. 16A is actually, actually, the title is a little inaccurate, because the dog strip, as delineated in the map, is Lot 16A.
So the whole, the whole strip is 16A? Okay, so it's a little misleading in terms of title.
There's, there's two sides. If you're going into Dedito, and you're going into the, the old mayor's office.
Yes.
Right? There's, the dog strip is on both sides.
Yes.
So, one side is 9A, and one side is 16A. And the lot, I mean, the memorial will be located within 16A.
Within 16A.
Yeah, that parcel, as delineated in the map, it'll be.
Right. So, just to make it clear, and since the good senator is here, and I'm just looking at Matt for the first time, as we're facing the old fire stations, say, for example, the area to the left is 16A, area to the right is 9A. And so the park would be designated in 16A.
That's right.
Now, the, if I may, the move of the amendment, Senator, if you would concede a yield to a question.
Sure.
And I just, I forget, in my mind, I'm trying to picture that skate park.
It's in, it's in 16A.
It's in 16A?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, from the skate park to, is it Santa Monica, or?
Yeah, that, all the way to the end.
To the end with the traffic light in?
Yes.
That's the remainder of 16A from the skate park.
Okay. I mean, that's a significant piece.
Yes.
So, the purpose of this is that really, we give the municipal planning council to the ability to dedicate the whole thing, if they wanted to.
If they wanted to.
If they wanted to.
The mayor would decide how big the park would be, within the remainder portion, and then will mark that, and that would be the veterans' park. And then, there'll be a remainder portion of 16A that is undedicated, if I want to say.
There will be a remaining portion of 16A?
It will be up to the mayor and the municipal planning council.
Right. But I mean, again, there is that possibility that they could allocate the whole thing, and there would be nothing left for any other purposes, except for what's addressed in this bill.
That's, that's correct.
And again, I'm not, I'm not going down this line of questioning in opposition to the whole intent, because again, if this is what the people of Dedito want, and especially on behalf of honoring our veterans, and knowing full well that we have the highest enlistment rate per capita in this island, in the nation, and on all the other factual accolades that we can say about our men and women in the service, I have no problem with it. I just wanna make sure in my mind that we are fully aware of what we're doing going forward, at least everybody's fully aware out there, that we were allowing the municipal planning council to go ahead and take that whole strip and dedicate that to the memorial park, the Veterans Memorial Park. And it's limited right now to just these activities that are included, basically a monument, restrooms, pavilion meeting, and meditation center, fitness trail, botanical gardens, parking stop for community use. And, you know, when we start talking about, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that, first of all, when you're talking about the possible allocation of such a large space to a trail like this, that the maintenance is gonna be an issue. Maintenance is always an issue on this island. And right now, the way it reads is that the municipal council is allowed to accept donations, whether it's cash, monetary, or in kind, to be able to erect all the things that are mentioned here, as well as to maintain the park. The issue in my mind is, if we do not perhaps limit it to a certain size, say, for example, a hectare, 10,000 square meters, then, you know, which is probably manageable in terms of maintaining, then at a certain point in time, will, will they come back to us and say, well, now that you've allowed us to put this park, now you have to take responsibility for the maintenance? And again, not, not to show any opposition to the bill, but just to show a concern that we need to think this one through as well, that, as well as going in the future, knowing that Dedito has a very big population, in fact, the most populated area of our island, there are gonna be other needs that the committee might have right there and then, that are not inclusive in this bill. And, of course, I will concede to the fact that we could always come back to this body, include, make an amendment to this, to this bill, or to the law that will eventually be enacted, reflecting this bill, and to include other activities or other infrastructure. But again, I have a kind of, I just have a concern, and I'm not objecting to this, I just have a concern, that the ability to dedicate the whole strip for the memorial park may, may not be, you know, one or two years down the road, or sometime in the future, may not be exactly what they wanted to do. And I think it's easier to, it's easier to limit the size right now, and then extend it later, as opposed to allow them the whole flexibility to give the whole range, and give the whole strip, and then to try to take it away down the road, right, just because we wanna use it, or they wanna use it for other purposes. And I just wanna make note of that. I am not objecting, I'm not proffering an amendment. I just wanna make sure I voiced my concern. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Espaldón. We're gonna take a brief recess. We're gonna take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session. On the Panglinen amendment, there's no one else who would like to speak on it? Okay, there being none, Senator Panglinen, do you want to close with your amendment? Wait, Senator Taitewi? Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I wanted to ensure that we gave the opportunity to the elected mayor to make the decision of the size of this with her Municipal Planning Council. And she's assured us that, you know, they want to ensure that they maximize the place, they keep the, some of the green space there to ensure that Dedito, even in its expansion, doesn't become totally urban and, and we lose some of the character of our tropical island. And that really was the intent of that Daug Strip for both sides, was to have a really beautiful green corridor as you're driving through Dedito. And we've been able to maintain on one side of the street so far. And we wanna preserve that, and I think the mayor's very sensitive to making that happen. So I really foresee that with her influence, with the Municipal Planning Council members that have supported her, that they will, in designing or determining the ultimate size of this monument and memorial, that they will ensure that, that the integrity of the, of the strip remains and is preserved, so that any development will be integrated into the tropical and green strip there, rather than replace the green strip. So I, I have full confidence that the mayor, in her assurances to us, will ensure that that happens. And that's why I crafted this in this fashion that would recognize her role as, as the signee of that village, and of course, the supportive nature of her objectives and her goals of the Municipal Planning Council members. Thank you, and Sito Smalsi.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. So on the, the motion then to accept this amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you. On the main motion, Senator Taitewi?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to congratulate the author of this bill and feel that anyone who wants to come up and step up to take responsibility, especially in any type of funding, I welcome that wholeheartedly. And, but I do have a concern that was earlier brought up with regards to the different types of activities, and I'm not sure if anybody was able to address that. But I would like to present an amendment to the bill, and it's on page two. It is going into writing right now, Madam Speaker, and it's fairly simple. But it's on page two, line 17, or it's starting on line 16, striking out "and," going straight to parking lots on line 17, placing right after stalls, "and any other, any other activities that the Dedito Municipal Council sees fit, but not to exceed any, exceed two stories high." Now, if you give me a minute, Madam Speaker, it's being written up, the amendment. It's very short, and the reason for this is just that, that was mentioned earlier. There could be other activities that could be put in the park, and I don't want the inability of having other activities like that.
We're gonna take a brief recess. Let's say she's back in session. While, I'm going to allow the Senator, Senator Taitewi, to prepare her amendment and call her back. But I would like to also take care of other amendments that the author would like to proffer. So Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Sito Smalsi, Speaker. Just like to make sure that we correct the location of where the memorial park will be. And I'd like to make an amendment on the title, and for the title to read, "An Act Relative to Renaming the Sauv Daug, Dedito Buffer Strip, the Dedito Veterans Memorial Park Located Within Lot Block 16A." And that would be on the title, and then it would also reflect that on line five. Delete the identified parcels located, or, I'm sorry, take that back. The identified parcel is located
Within.
Within Lot Block 16A.
Yes, so then we'll delete, okay, so the, the First Amendment is on the title, and is to delete which extends partially across, and add in the words "located within Lot Block 16A." And then on line five, the identified parcel is located, delete partially across, and with, and replace with the word "within."
Yes.
Okay, on that amendment, there being no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Taitewi, are we ready then with your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For, for the sake of time and having this copied out, I'll go ahead and read the amendment.
We'll try to follow you and make sure then it's not too difficult.
No, it's not at all, Madam Speaker. It's basically, add on page two, line 17, after stalls, the following, "And any other activities the municipal council approves." Period.
Okay, so after, on line 16, after botanical garden, but to add a comma, parking stalls, and add the words "and any other activity the Dedito Municipal Planning Council approves for community use."
Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, so on that amendment, without any objections, and so ordered. Can you please make sure that the clerks get a copy of your amendment? So to close then on the amendment, Senator Barnes, you're recognized. Or you want to send it down? The entire, no, not the amendment, now the bill, the main bill?
Thank you, Speaker. I just wanna say thank you to all those who strengthened this Bill 362. I wanna thank the mayor also, and the veterans who were here earlier in support of this bill. And I hope my colleagues support this, this bill for the veterans of Dedito. Sito Smalsi, and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
You're very welcome, Senator. And on the motion then to place Bill 362-30 in the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. That, we have exhausted then all of the bills on our agenda. The bills are going to be engrossed, burning the midnight oil. Please be here for voting tomorrow afternoon promptly at 1:00. Okay, so we are recess until 1:00 tomorrow afternoon. Okay, so recess.